Okay, Supervisor Chris Adams.
Welcome everyone to the November 5th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. If you'll join me and stand Supervisor Fraser will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's nice.
What's going on?
Okay, well. We do have a full agenda. One of the items is changing on the agenda. I just want everybody to be aware. It's the right set of notes. Okay. So we have on the agenda a presentation from Assemblymember Jim Wood. That was planned, but there was a schedule change and he was unable to join us. So hopefully we'll be able to reschedule. Maybe not. No, okay. That was a one shot and we missed it.
He'll be out of office before our next meeting.
Okay, alright. Well, it's too bad. I was glad that he offered the opportunity for an update and sorry we'll miss it. Okay, so we will move forward with a presentation from Connie Stewart regarding broadband efforts. This is under item A1, Community Development.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Can you hear me? Am I fine?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
Okay terrific. Hi, I'm Connie Stewart, Executive Director of Initiatives from Cal Poly Humboldt. And I happen to host the Redwood Coast Regional Consortium for Broadband, bringing more broadband to our region. And I'm here for my semi-annual report to you of how things are going with bringing more broadband to everyone. And let me just, if you wouldn't mind, share my screen. And hopefully we can do this presentation. So let me go to slideshow and let's see if this works. There we go. So first of all, I always like to start with a little what do we mean by the terms I'm going to use for those folks who aren't so into broadband as I have been over the last 20 years. So middle mile is a fiber line that carries a large amount of data. Think of it as your highway and in our region, we often use highways to create middle mile. Last mile is the service that actually connects to your home business or the community member. And then open access is the ability for any service provider to get onto that middle mile and interconnect in an equal way. So in the past, a lot of times companies would build a middle mile and but they would be able to decide who they would let compete on that middle mile. And so the state has put a lot of effort into creating what we call open access middle miles. So any provider, no matter how small or big, can use the same highway to get data to customers and data out of our community. So as you know, the governor signed SB 156 and that invested about $6 million into broadband for Californians. And three and a half million of that went to create the open access middle mile. And $6 billion may seem like a lot of money and California is in 3.5 billion, that should be billion, my apologies. Seemed like a lot of money, but when we got down to the costs, it costs Caltrans 880,000 per mile. And lease costs are roughly around 280,000 per mile. So obviously the state decided to lean on other providers and buy service from them when they could and do a lot more joint builds. And projects like 299 because it was cheaper. What is ended up happening is the state has had an ambitious goal of putting in 10,000 miles and instead they're going to put in 8,000. That is some bad news for us in our region. It meant that the Highway 3 project in Trinity County fell off the list. However, there is still a desire to continue to build projects like the Highway 3 that fell off the list. And so last year we attempted to get another 1.5 billion, but the bill failed to get out because of the budget deficit. And I expect we will go again and try to get another 1.5 billion. And please, let's put this on your to-do legislation list as well. Let's go after this money because that Highway 3 project is critical to getting service. Last mile service to Trinity County customers. And so I was extremely disappointed. And I am really on the rampage talking to anybody at the state to say, we have to make that project a priority to get again. That's the bad news. The good news is the hell caused by transportation for 299 is almost over. And 90% I can't tell you how many citizens have called me and said, I curse you Connie. And then I thank you Connie every time I get stopped by traffic and you know. So the conduit is 90% done, 30% of the fiber is laid, but but we still have, we still need everyone's patience. Because it's going to take till June. Pray for a mild winter. So we can finish this project sooner. But but I know, I mean, I can't imagine the, you know, the traffic. And thank you all. This has been, you know, 15 years in the making and it's almost over. It's almost over. And then the fun part skits to happen because we get to do last mile service off of there. And one of the major funding sources for last mile service is the Broadband Equity and Access and Deployment Program. About 1.8. Let me get my billion is coming to California. And the goal is to get affordable, reliable service to everyone. And when we, I know some people have a reaction to the word equity, but when we talk about equity in this process, we are talking about rural communities as well. So rural is an equity partner that has been ignored when it comes to technology and infrastructure. So it is on the list. So so hopefully. Let's see. Hopefully we will be able to use BEAD. There's a couple other funding sources coming still to use to get last mile out, especially around the 299 project. And get get folks served in Trinity County. So I have to tell you, I've talked to about four companies that are interested in providing last mile service. So hopefully they will come through and we'll have some great, great connectivity. This is another bad news. I hate to be the bearer of bad news and know that that we are working on. Anytime there's bad news, we just makes us work harder. Frontier Communication, I don't know if you all know, but ironically Verizon is in talks to buy back Frontier Communication. And so Frontier Communication has let the state know that they are not building the projects that they promised in Southern Trinity, Southern Humboldt and Northern Mendocino. I had a phone call this morning with some of the people who are parties to the sale and are going to get us direct answers. Direct access to talking to Verizon early. So we can talk about the importance of improving access in Verizon's territory. When they take over Frontier. So these projects are withdrawn. I'm hoping that we can revive them with Verizon. And in some ways alter them to provide better last mile service in Southern Trinity. So these are the key activities over the next six months. We'll have another chance to have a funding under the state's infrastructure grant program. This program I'm anticipating will help in Southern Trinity. We're also working on the the Lata Grant project and I'm hoping if we're we're done or closer to done on the environmentals, we can take advantage of the this spring funding for that project as well. The US federal government will have also a rural utility service funding program in the spring. That I'm hoping that we can gather interest in. And then spring and summer, we will have the BEAD funding. So we have three different funding opportunities for last mile. And just in time, Digital 299 will be done as well. So that's that's our game plan, getting interest and applying for these three pockets of money that are coming for last mile service. How do we get ready? We build lists of those who need service. So you know, please, if you have constituents who are asking you for more service, businesses that are asking you for more service. Let's, we need to create inventories of those lists. In some cases, I'm talking directly to those businesses and I'm giving them the number of the utility or the the technology company that's interested so they can make their case for last mile service as folks are building out their maps and their plans. So I suck a couple of a couple of citizens and said, oh, I'm I'm going to give you government relations for these companies. You talk, talk up the need for service. They need to hear directly from on the ground and now is the time to be giving that message. So you know, the state thinks of anchor institutions as schools and libraries, but we know that hardware store is critical, you know, there are other critical partners during emergencies. So let's build those lists. Let me know who those folks are. So I can be talking to them because the next six months is going to be critical. For collecting data on the needs of the region and making the case to companies to apply. So let me have the list. And that's really it. And I put up this code. If you want to follow the state's newsletter. Here's the code for for getting on that list. And with that, I'll stop talking and be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Thank you very much Connie. Questions or comments from the board? Connie, I just wanted to clarify. First of all, thank you for carving out time. It looks like you're traveling. You still made times to meet with us. So I appreciate that. I know you were, it's clear that you're fighting very hard for us. And and yet it it seems to me that what you've shared today is that this massive $6 billion program is likely to have zero impact on the people of Highway 3. Which goes both directions and is some of our most remote communities. And they basically are left out.
Yep. Yep. So you know. I'm devastated. I mean, I I'm devastated about losing three. And I'm, you know, it will not stay. I mean, I can't say it won't stand. I, you know, that pass is difficult. It's difficult. But we have to have it. So that's why I said we're, you know, there is an effort to get more money for middle mile. It, you know, unfortunately, it's going to fall into the higher cost allocation and we've got to have it. So it is my number one target for lobbying. And we'll get, I mean, we're going to get it done.
But I mean, clearly we have the right champion and partner trying to look out on our behalf and you're fighting a behemoth. It's it's just obviously it's challenging and for the folks that have been perhaps allowing themselves to be hopeful that that something's on the way and then to hear this is obviously a tough choice. So I hope you'll just keep looking for ways to serve those parts of our communities. I know even it from my perspective, some of our worst weather that affects other communications happens in those areas. So they're already in the most need of enhanced services and they're the ones that will be left out. Did you have something Supervisor Cox?
Yeah. Hi Connie, it's Jill. Hey, as you're working through this lobbying process and the things that you're you're going to you know, be really raising a bold hand for on our behalf because really what has happened to us does not fit the definition of equity. And would you, I know you're really busy and strung in many directions. But could I ask that you really take us as a board and as a county with you step by step through that process and that every time you say, we need a letter, we need bulk emails, we need, you know, I want to see that list coming through, all of those pieces. Could you really help us to walk with you and and be that support that's needed?
So sorry, my neighbors just decided to start cutting their lawn. Do you still hear me? Or let's go into the house.
You're good.
Okay. Sorry about that.
We actually don't hear them at all. So you're fine to be right where you are.
Okay, terrific. Oh, great. Then I won't scatter. Yes. And and I will start drafting letters and ask that they get on your board agenda around this. I think we need to come out of the gate strong. Today's election day. We're going to know who our leaders are very quickly. We need to get get in front of them about this. No, I'm on the state, the state transportation's equity board. I already called a meeting and had the California Department of Technology and the California Public Utilities Commission in front of that board and asked them if they had, when they decided which routes to eliminate, had they done an equity monitoring screen of the impacts of those. We need to tell the story of three. And honestly, I do think there's a way, even if we have to just build a spur up to Callahan that doesn't go all the way to Aetna. That we need to fight for that. Off of 299. So that, you know, that's going to be part of my strategy. Is okay, I know you're, you maybe can't interconnect with Aetna. But we need, we need to get to that mountain, you know, we need to get up that mountain.
Except question there on your thought process because does it, does it not give a stronger story for the equity to Aetna as well? If you, if you pulled them into the conversation?
So Aetna, Aetna is, it's, Aetna has got the route, but the route stopped at Aetna.
They got it coming from the south, the north?
So yeah, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, but they took care of the north. They cut us.
Got it.
So I applaud Supervisor Cox's request on that. And you know, whether it's, you know, I'll be at the CSAC board meeting later this month. I can't remember when RCRC happens, but you know, there's not a lot that we can do through those, but I will certainly be using my voice to speak out on behalf of of our part of the process. And and we, I would say our communities came out very strong to PUC comments when AT&amp;T was looking to eliminate carryover last resort status. And so we, I think we can engage to the extent it is valuable and you probably have a better sense of what will be valuable. So again, to Supervisor Cox's request, if you can keep us informed of your efforts and where we can help, I think you'll get support.
Yeah, the the other big push is the affordability push. The the federal affordability plan, connectivity plan did not get refunded and affordability is going to be critical. So that will be the other letter. Expect those two letters very between now and January. When when the legislature kicks off. We'll have drafts of those letters to come to you all. And then if you have a legislative platform, if you please add this to your platform.
Okay. And I am also on the Internet and telecommunications committee for NACO. So I will certainly add my voice there as well. So thank you for this update. I know it's not fun to deliver bad news. We appreciate also the good news and and your continuing fights on our behalf. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today.
You bet. Okay, skipping past item two from Assemblymember Jim Wood. Item three, County Administrative Office, receive an update from US Forest Service regarding matters that concern Trinity County. And and Sundal is here. Thank you, sir, for being here and for your email update in advance.
Sure. So good morning, members of the board and chairman. Just a quick update. I guess I should start off Ben Sundell, Acting District Ranger for the South Fork and Trinity River Management Units of the Shashtree National Forest. So I'll try to keep my update brief. So real quick, an update on the Trinity wildfire crisis strategy landscape and that team. So you may have heard that the Forest Service budget is tightening up a bit. In light of this, I want to take a moment to update you on the landscape team. Due to current budget realities within the Forest Service, it has prompted changes to make sure work for managing our national forest continues. One of these has been the decision to strengthen the Trinity Landscape Wildfire Crisis Strategy Team by integrating the team into the permanent organizational structure of the Shashtree National Forest and Six Rivers National Forest. So basically that sub-organization has now or will be soon absorbed by the Six Rivers and Shashtree National Forest. So we retain those employees, that workforce. So rather than being a standalone team or unit, the permanent incorporation of the Trinity Landscape Team will allow it to become a task force within our two organizations. Task force members will have some duties outside of the wildfire crisis strategy work, but they'll also continue their work on wildfire crisis strategy projects such as Big Ranch. The wildfire crisis strategy remains a top priority for the Forest Service and the USDA. 2.4 billion has been allocated to be used over a 10-year span to implement forest health and resiliency projects across 21 priority landscapes, including the Trinity Landscape. Thus far, more than 46 million has been allocated to the Trinity Landscape, Forest Health and Resiliency Projects. Moving the team into a permanent organization, organization will not alter plans for these projects that money will fund. WCS work is scaling up, not pulling back. In 2023 and 2024, about 41,000 hazardous fuels acres were treated, not including wildfire. Right now, two large projects, North Trinity Community Trinity Camps and Big Ranch, which is the Big Ranch project is just about 35,000 acres. It's a joint project between us and the Six Rivers National Forest. Are advancing in the planning stages and the pilot project is on the ground with implementation as we speak. These are just a few landscape projects that are now in the planning and implementation phase. Transitioning our Trinity team into our permanent forest organizations is consistent with our longstanding integrated approach to landscape projects. Implementation of WCS projects has been and will continue to be a collaborative effort between partners, forest staff and our Trinity Landscape Task Force members. So basically that team will be absorbed into our permanent organization WCS priorities and not only here on both the Shashtree and Six Rivers, but as an agency, still remain our number one priority. So those large-scale landscape projects will continue. Those ID teams will continue to implement and plan those projects. So we are still moving full steam forward on those large, larger landscape projects. So that was an update on the Trinity Landscape Team. So bringing it back here to local. So on the planning side and implementation side, Berman, the team has reviewed and is still reviewing some of the comments from Waireka Fish and Wildlife Office. So that is continuing to move forward. Big Ranch project, we had a great field trip with the collaborative group a few weeks ago. That was successful. We also had a tribal field trip this past week with the local tribes and that was successful. That was led by our heritage program staff here on this forest. And the Six Rivers and Shashtree National Forest will be having our official kickoff meeting for that project for the planning phase tomorrow. Tomorrow is November 6 already. So those, those are moving forward successfully and strong. More on the implementation side pilot, the pilot project. Work has started on that project around some fuel breaks alongside the road. We also had a Trinity County collaborative field trip to pilot to showcase some of that work and talk about that work along with some of the upcoming work. The Watershed Center is taking the lead on within the pilot project. We also just slightly talked about the Hayfork project, which is scheduled to kick off as soon as we get close to finishing up the planning phase of Big Ranch. So Hayfork is looking like a planning start of sometime in FY 26 or late 25. The Hayward Timber Sale was awarded. That contractor has started work near Trinity Center Airport to reduce the or improve the landing and approach pass to that airport. It sounds like they'll move into the campground sometime in 2025 as the the weather allows. And just a quick overview of how the Shashtree closed out FY 24. Approximately 26,000 acres of fuel reduction activities, which was a 16% increase from last year. Of that, those acres also comprised of 30% broadcast burning, 30% mechanical fuels reduction and 20% commercial thinning and 20% pile burning. The Shashtree leads the region in broadcast burning acres accomplished in FY 24. Recreation has really started closing up activities for FY or calendar year 24 with the weather change. Great work by all the volunteer organizations that have worked across the national forest here on the Shashtree. Those volunteers and their work accumulated to over 5,000 hours of recreation improvement across the Shashtree National Forest. So a huge shout out to those volunteer groups that accomplish that work on this forest. Special uses update. The six wildfire alert cameras through digital path, those six permits have been fully executed. So Digital Path has those permits in hand now and we'll start looking at windows of opportunity to start getting that infrastructure up to those sites to have those cameras operating by fire season calendar year 25. We had a great internal discussion on the possible placement of a fire camera on Ironside Mountain. We came up with some great options. We shared those options with the group that's proposing placing that camera up on Ironside Mountain. So we have some work to do through the winter months to have that camera hopefully in place for fire season 2025. So lots of good discussions on that and I'm glad we got a few options out there and then feedback on those options from that group that is proposing for the placement of that camera. Prescribed fire has started here on the west side of the Shashtree National Forest. We finally kicked off prescribed fire activities yesterday here on the TRMU with some pile burning outside of Big Bar between Big Bar and Hyam Palm. Those, those acres were successful yesterday and they are continuing those acres today. Uh, those, uh, those acres were successful yesterday and they are continuing, uh, those acres today. Uh, we're looking at a window on Thursday for understory burning, uh, in the Weverell Community Forest. So more to come on that as we look at the, the weather windows as they materialize today and tomorrow to make sure that that were in the correct window and the fuels are receptive to meet our prescription, uh, needs for that understory burn. So, um, I will let you guys know, uh, board if, if we do go with a green light for that understory burn and, um, we'll circle back on that. Um, our prescribed, uh, our, our fuel staff and fire staff, um, were able to assist the Watershed Center over the last couple of weeks with some of their private, uh, land prescribed fire activities. So that was cool to see, uh, the inter-agency, the inter-partnerships, uh, with the Watershed Center as their fuels program was able to implement some prescribed fire ahead of us and then us integrating with their workforce to, to help them carry that out. So, uh, great, great co- uh, collaboration there. Our fire suppression staff are still, uh, assisting, uh, fire suppression efforts nationally. Uh, we do have a few resources in Oklahoma, uh, helping that, uh, geographical area out. Um, and we're currently in the midst of, uh, permanent fire hire to, uh, fill some key vacancies, uh, within the fire program here. Um, but our fire suppression staff is still fully staffed. Uh, we do have them on severity packages from the regional office and, uh, they can respond here locally, uh, regionally, geographically and nationally if the need arises. So we're fully, fully, uh, staff for fire suppression efforts as well. Uh, the forest will host a five-day Women in Wildfire camp in F Y 25. We're looking at, I think the window is March, April timeframe-ish. So this is formal training that leaves, uh, gives the attendees a solid background in, um, fire suppression training and builds up their resumes to the point to where, uh, when vacancies do open up on USA jobs, they can apply to those vacancies and they meet all the minimum requirements to apply to those vacancies. So that is a five-day, week-long camp that will be held in early 2025. And then a just quick staffing update. Um, I know over the last few months, I've been the lone line officer on the west side of the Shasta Trinity National Forest. Happy to announce that, uh, we have filled a deputy district ranger detail to fill behind me, uh, during this, uh, gap period. Uh, that person is Fred Perrin. Uh, Fred Perrin is our environmental engineer with the Shasta Trinity National Forest. Um, so super happy to have him on board and, uh, get his feet wet in the line officer role and just be there to help me out, uh, interact with you, uh, as board members and our local community and our partners. So, uh, super, super stoked to have him on board and you guys, uh, will, will be seeing him here interacting with you as well. So I can give him a little training experience. So, um, that pretty much wraps up, uh, my, uh, report out for the Shasta Trinity National Forest, specifically the west side. And I just wanted to say, uh, appreciate, uh, uh, the attendance up here and allowing me to provide the, the report outs and hope everybody has a good holiday season.
Thank you very much. Anything questions? Yes, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is the, um, from the Forest Service perspective, is, or, uh, is, is it okay to burn? People have been wondering if it's okay to start burning like your brush files at your house or for things like.
Yeah, so I would need to talk to my chiefs. I know that's a Cal Fire, uh, lifting. I want to say Cal Fire did lift the, the burn ban.
Yeah, I thought I saw that.
Yeah.
I was just checking because I know that things cross over. And then also, um, I just want to say in the area of, of recreation, oh, we had a, we host, uh, a hunting camp and it was a delightful time and I'm so grateful always. I love that time of year. And really, when you see families out utilizing the forest and, you know, the trailheads packed with, with all kinds of different vehicles and people recreating for all kinds of different reasons, but we had, uh, five generations shoved in the front of one pickup bounce in and the youngest one was the daughter. So she was with her great-grandpa, her grandpa, her, and her dad, and they bounced in on a road hunt. And when you just see those kinds of interactions within families enjoying the, the forest land, it, it's just, it really makes you happy that those recreation dollars have been spent and that the volunteers who work towards that have done the work that they've done because it truly is a huge piece of, of Americana. So thank you guys for having those campgrounds open and doing the work that you've done over this last year to get, um, families out there enjoying the wilderness.
You're welcome.
So, uh, two things. First one is, did you say that, um, Deputy Director Perrin is on a detail or is he permanent?
He'll be on, uh, Deputy District Ranger Fred Perrin will be on a 120-day detail, filling behind my position while I'm on the detailed district ranger. Yep. So he's, he's, he's the old me for 120 days on a detail.
You are the old Tara.
Correct.
For a detail time.
For a detail.
Man.
So to fill permanent open slots, we do details. So, uh, when Tara went to the last and as the forest supervisor, I accepted the detail behind her as a district ranger, which then left my position open. And then finally, a- after announcing that detail, Fred applied to it, uh, with an, uh, some other applicants and he came out on top and he accepted the detail. So he officially started this week, uh, but good on him. He was, uh, scheduled for vacation in Maui. So, uh, he's enjoying some warmer climate right now. Yeah.
Okay. And thank you. I've got you all in the right slot in my head now.
So we'll be back to two line officers on the west side when he returns from vacation.
Okay. And then just in answer to the question that, uh, Supervisor Carpenter Harris raised, um, Cal Fire Shasta Humboldt Unit now requires a burn permit year round. The burn ban was lifted November 1. This came into effect, I'm reading his note, this is from, um, Battalion.
Okay.
Came into effect a few years ago. At that time, the Shasta Humboldt Unit decided that the North Coast Air Quality Permit would suffice for a standard burn permit. So the Cal Fire permit did not have to be requested in redundancy. However, the Humboldt Del Norte Unit has been requiring both. So they've def- decided to follow suit so that it simplifies out for people. So the air quality permit is required year round and the Cal Fire burn permit is required year round. And we're going to get that information out, um, to the county through our, um, information officers. So folks will have the details on that.
Yep. And that was free, right? Then I've seen the notes, it's free. The Cal Fire burn.
Oh, I believe that one is the air quality burn permit from that one's.
I'm pretty sure I saw the Cal Fire, even though they're requiring something new, it's free. Of the first two levels. Okay. The special burns.
Come out and inspect and do some other stuff.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, for clarification, there, there are sometimes we, people want to burn larger than four by four piles and things like that, and you have to have a higher level burn permit. So those might require costs from Cal Fire because they have to come out and inspect, but otherwise, uh, they're not adding cost to our ability to do what we've been doing. They're just adding a step.
Yep. And I know, uh, the Shasta Trinity and some of our neighboring forests have lifted their fire restrictions that we usually put in place during fire season. So, uh, with the, the last few weeks of cooler, uh, more moist weather, we have lifted our fire restrictions. But yeah, residential burning, that's a, that's a Cal Fire issue.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Another question, um, on the recreation side. I had some people ask me why, um, the campgrounds at Forest Glen and Hell Gate were closed a week or so prior to buck season ending. Um, and actually I had that question from a few constituents, some people who traveled there planning on camping and the gates were closed. So that's something, I don't know if that was a date-generated, uh, closure. And if so, that might be something to take into consideration that, uh, October 15th is a date, but the last day of buck season is a better time to close down the campgrounds.
Sure. I'll talk to my rec staff about that and see what we can do for the future.
So, uh, surprisingly, um, for an area like that, I actually had, uh, I think three different, different people that have raised that to me, like, why was the campground closed, right? The week or it was actually, I think, two weeks prior to buck season closing.
Okay. Thank you again for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Under item four, Health and Human Services, Veteran Services. Receive an update on services provided locally and adopt a proclamation supporting Operation Green Light and recognizing November 2024 as Veterans and Military Families Month.
Chairman Lutweiler and distinguished members of the board, good morning. I'm Jennifer Dobbs, the, um, Trinity County Veteran Services Officer. I would like to thank the board for your support of Operation Green Light and Designation of November as Veterans and Military Families Month. By displaying green lights on government buildings, residences and places of businesses from November 4th through 11th, Trinity County residents can show their support for veterans and honor the sacrifices made by those who serve their nation as members of the armed forces. I have a, um, slideshow I hope made, okay. It's a new system and I'm not, not sure I'm very good at it. So. So, um, Cal Vet actually estimated a little bit higher, how many veterans we have in our county, it went from 926 to 1,013. And I have seen quite a few new veterans, the, um, born post nine 11 veterans, which kind of hurts a little bit. That was that long ago. Um, so if you can go to slide two, thank you. The, um, 2% World War II veterans, that might be a little bit outdated. As you know, they're, they're passing quickly. Um, Korean War still makes up 5% of our veterans. Vietnam era is the largest at 47%. Peacetime veterans, which is the, between the wars includes, um, late 40s, late 50s and then the 1980s mostly. That's 22% and, uh, 24% of the rest. Uh, so of the 1,013 veterans in our county, there's still at least around 350 who are not getting benefits, um, that I know are not getting benefits. This is as of last fiscal year. Um, 37% are receiving them. And by benefits, I mean like actual monthly payments from the V A. Um, now 28%, I still don't know who they are and I'm trying to find them. It's, it's word of mouth mostly who I have, um, coming to see me. So the more people understand that there is a V S O in the county, the more veterans I get. Next slide, please. So there's some of the highlights from 23, 24. I served 440 individuals. Um, 44 of them were referrals from H H S, that's medical, uh, recipients. And, um, I got 191 claims filed. Service-connected disability is where a veteran was wounded or injured in service or received some sort of um, illness or disease that is permanent. Um, they get a monthly stipend plus healthcare. Dependency is just adding their dependents. Um, usually if they get 30% or more, they get extra money for having dependents. To receive pensions, D I C is when the veteran passes and that's the dependency indemnity compensation. The widow or widower gets a monthly stipend of around $1,600 plus healthcare and, um, property tax exemption. Um, appeals, there's a lot of issues right now at the V A with their new members and new legislation. They don't, um, process the claims properly. So most of my appeals are higher level reviews where they did something wrong. Um, and then five were burial benefits. Next slide, please. Okay, the financial impact, um, received $744,000 in retroactive payments last year. And again, these are all, um, tax-free benefits. A monthly increase of 91,000. So total, it was just over $7.3 million coming into the county for veterans or their dependents. Current monthly payments around 651,000. Now for healthcare, that means that they were either, um, granted dependent healthcare or they got new V A healthcare benefits. Because just because you're a veteran doesn't mean you get healthcare. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the, the district comparison. It is increasing, thank goodness, every month. Um, but again, I, I still need to get out into some of the more rural areas. Uh, that's where I'm lacking right now is outreach into the rural areas. So I apologize for that, but I, I'm trying to get out there. So again, word of mouth, if you could get the word out that I actually live here in Trinity County and work here in Trinity County and I'm happy to travel to see people. I do home visits. Um, hopefully we can get those numbers up even more. Next slide, please. Okay, here's our big issues. Community care, um, the V A has a system where if the veteran can't receive healthcare that they need at the V A system, they give them community care where they're allowed to go out and receive from a private physician. Um, that costs way more money than veterans using their V A care. So they do, um, have a policy now called repatriation where they're trying to bring veterans back into the V A care. They just don't have enough doctors. Um, and one of the other issues is veterans receiving mental health care want to stick with the, um, private physicians they have. And so some have been receiving calls from the V A telling them if they don't show progress, they're not going to get their physician anymore. Um, I have a meeting every month with the clinic in Reading and we, we talk about it. Um, we're not the only county that experiences that, but that is definitely a concern. Um, it's a national, um, issue. Repatriation is a national thing. So I, I don't know if we're going to be able to fix it, but um, that, that is something we're going to try for. Transportation, obviously we've talked about that a million times, I think. So I won't bore you with it. In-home care is something that everybody has a problem with here in Trinity County. There's not enough in-home healthcare providers. The V A does have a way to allow a family member to get paid to do it if the veteran has service-connected disabilities um, at 100%. And they get care, um, respite, they get a monthly income, they get healthcare. I'm talking about the, the in-home care provider, um, and they get a lot of training. Those veterans who need in-home care from, uh, relatives who don't meet the qualifications for them to get paid can still get the training, which is excellent. So I will try and get more of that information out. Um, but they don't really have a lot of V A services where they come up from Reading and do in-home care very often. Um, the rural and off-grid veterans are another issue because some of the care the V A wants to try and go to for repatriation is telehealth. And without that infrastructure in place, they can't get that telehealth care. Medical issues. I talked last time about toxic exposure and, um, Supervisor Lutweiler shared his story. P T S D and T B I, I think are very, very big issues next to toxic exposure. Um, T B I is something that was just recently discovered with the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. Uh, probably about 2005 or 2006, it really started becoming apparent that there were issues with, um, head injuries. But they're recognizing that veterans from previous wars are also experiencing these issues. So I've actually seen veterans from, um, the 60s, 70s get T B I granted, even though they don't have a baseline. Yes.
What is T B I?
I'm sorry, it's traumatic brain injury.
Oh.
Um, like in sports, they get the repeated concussions, but it's slightly different with a blast injury. Um, a blast injury will be, usually the front or the side would be a significant hit. They'll lose consciousness for a little bit. And they may or may not have other wounds to go along with it. Um, but it can cause a lot of symptoms that are similar to P T S D. Um, it can also cause like motor skill issues, memory loss, um, some, um, physical problems with walking or anything a brain trauma can, can experience. Um, and then the veteran stigma is an interesting one. We spent so much time pushing, you know, veterans have P T S, veterans have P T S D that they forget that most veterans don't have P T S D. And so there's a big push nationally to say, hey, we are, most of us, okay. Even the ones with P T S D may have some issues, but it's not the kind of thing you see in Hollywood where, um, you know, Rambo just goes on a rampage because he's having a flashback. That's not how P T S D works. It's more, um, internal, they don't act out. And so a lot of veterans won't come forward if they have P T S D because they don't want to lose their guns or they don't want the stigma of it. Um, but then there's also those veterans who don't have those challenges that are, um, leery about saying that they're veterans because they don't want to be stuck with that stigma. So the new campaign you might be seeing is the, we're okay. Um, and for my wish list real quick, I just, um, I've talked a little bit with Liz about this and, um, a couple of other people. We, I would love to have a veterans council. I can't be everywhere. I can't be all things veteran. I, I would love to be and it's an honor to have the position I have, but if there are people out there that maybe we could meet every once in a while to discuss issues I'm just not aware of, because again, I don't get out to those rural areas as much as I could. So.
If you wouldn't mind, spend just a couple more minutes explaining what that would look like to you, if, if you had your dream come true.
Okay. So it would be like veterans, stakeholders, people interested in veterans issues getting together. Um, just to discuss what these issues are and what different creative solutions could be. So like for the transportation, I don't have the resources to fix that, but if we had stakeholders and people interested in volunteering, maybe there is a way that could be fixed where there's, somebody takes a van down to the V A once a week or something. I think if, also it might, it might allow veterans to show what they're capable of. There's a lot of veterans out there who have amazing skills. Um, have a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience, but they're not really involved because nobody's asked them to be. So I, I was, it's still in the initial stages because I don't really know how to go about doing. That's why I'm throwing it at you. So I, I was, it's still in the initial stages because I don't really know how to go about doing it. That's why I'm throwing it at you.
We'll let you continue and then people may have other questions and comments.
Oh, that's pretty much it. That was my big spiel. It was short and sweet this time.
Well, thank you. Did anyone have, yes, please.
Question, may I? In regards to the, the in-home care. Can, is that specifically related to medical care needs? Or can that be helping clean house, helping go get groceries? Like what does that, what does that encompass?
That's a good question. There are both needs out there, but the VA will only help with the activities of daily living. So if the veteran needs help getting dressed or showering or feeding themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is a, a need that is very big out there, though. You know, guys living alone can't quite do all their shopping they need to do, but yeah, no solutions yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
So Jennifer, regarding this advisory council, so what you're asking the board, from our perspective, what you're asking is not difficult at all. If you're asking for supervisory participation in the council that you set up, we can ask the chair if he will agendize that and have someone assigned to that. Then you gather your stakeholders and, and that goes forward. And so I just want clarity, are you asking the board to participate with you on that? Or you're more giving us a vision of what you're going to do just sort of internally?
I feel like I jumped the gun a little bit and I probably need to get.
We're all over it. Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer, thank you very much. I have a lot of interaction with veterans at my other business and they are thrilled with the work that you do.
Thank you.
Since you jumped the gun a little bit there, I will be more than happy to be on the advisory council as a, as a person, not a board member, until that's ready. But thanks for the great job you're doing. And I know the veterans that I run into in Hayfork and Douglas City are very, very appreciative of what you do for them.
Thank you, that's very humbling.
They speak highly of you, all of them.
Thank you so much.
Chair, may I have a couple of seconds?
Please.
So I'd just like to brag on Jennifer a little bit. You know, oftentimes we see the, the numbers that she presented as just numbers. But there's a personal story behind those numbers. And just as some examples, individuals, you know, have received back payments that they were due, you know, in the five-digit range. And then are now receiving monthly allotments that significantly change their, their daily lifestyle. Their abilities to, to cope, their abilities to sustain just daily life needs and services within the county. And these are individuals that live within, you know, our county boundaries. People that we know and interact with. And this just doesn't happen once. I mean, there's, there's multiple times this happens. She interacts with the individuals, she interacts with spouses, maybe widows that don't even know they are authorized or these benefits are available to them. So I just think it's really important that we, we understand and recognize that, you know, when Jennifer stands up here and I certainly appreciate what she does. But, you know, there are individual behind all of these numbers. And it, and we, we oftentimes in these forums just kind of look at the numbers and say, oh, that's great. We have, you know, twenty percent more veterans and we've increased our amount of services by, you know, twenty percent, which is great. But there's also, you know, an individual who is behind that. And these individuals are also spending this money locally. So that is a, is a big deal too. It's not just, you know, that they get this money and it doesn't spend. They got to shop here, you know, they, they've got to get their car serviced here. They've, they've got to do these things, just normal life activities. So this does have a direct impact on, you know, our county in multiple ways. So thank you, Jennifer, for what you do on behalf of the county.
Thank you, sir. That's very kind.
Thank you.
Jennifer, one last thing quickly, just because my assumption is that you'll probably leave and go back to work. But in, in my board report out, so the PSA two, that's the Public Service Area Two of the Area Agency on Aging. We have one of those advisory councils that feeds into that. And one of those members is actively looking toward in-home care services being expanded into the Weaverville and Junction City areas. So I just want to make that connection for you. And maybe there's a nexus between those two sort of desires that can, can feed and fuel one another.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jennifer, thanks again. I appreciate it and I echo what Trent says. You know, as a board, we try to help the, the bigger good of the county. To change lives on an individual basis like you do is unbelievably great thing to do. It's, uh, it's moving. I see the people that you touch and they appreciate it a lot. Thank you again very much.
Thank you so much. It's an absolute honor to have my job, so I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, one last thing I just want to check. I know it was acknowledgement, it may have been jumping the gun a little bit, but it's great to maybe ideate a little bit here. We could provide direction to staff to say, we support any work that's done on this. And we support that if there is a desire to have supervisory responsibility, that we would support that. Is, is there a consensus of that, that we can give direction to staff? Okay, great. So we're, we're here for you in whatever way that you determine is helpful. And, and as you've heard so much, we really appreciate what you're doing. I think especially this, this part that we're kind of focused on right now. Men and women that have served are often wanting to be strong and independent. And so they, it is maybe harder to reach them and get them to open up and to get the help that they need from you. And one person serving thirty-two hundred square miles, I understand your concerns. So hopefully we can help. Uh, I did want to read this proclamation and then we can present that to you as well. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, supporting organization Green Light, Operation Green Light, for veterans and recognizing November twenty twenty-four as Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas the residents of Trinity County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Trinity County seeks to honor those individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans and their families make our county stronger by exemplifying the time-honored traits of duty, loyalty, selfless service, integrity and personal courage. And whereas Veterans Day has been set aside as the day all Americans pay tribute to the men and women who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation. And whereas each November, we honor the invaluable contributions of both our veterans and military families in Trinity County. And whereas Trinity County recognizes, supports and appreciates our veterans and military families year-round, especially during National Veterans and Military Families Month each November. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim November as National Veterans and Military Families Month. In observation of Operation Green Light, the Board encourages all community throughout Trinity County to acknowledge and honor the service of veterans by displaying a green light in the window of their residence or place of business from the evening of November fourth, twenty twenty-four through November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Genuinely passed and adopted this fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
I'll move to adopt proclamation as read.
We have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to get a picture?
Okay, thank you, everyone. Coming up on time for a break, but let's go ahead and have a public comment. And we'll take a break between that and starting into the rest of the agenda. So this, um, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Any public comment in the room?
I have no raised hands and no, oh.
Okay, we have one here.
Sorry, Tom. Apologize.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. Happy Election Day. The, the culmination of our adversarial political system, which may not be the best system, but it's ours. It permeates also our legal system, which also places me in the role of finding fault with our sheriff's department or, you know, that's my job. So I think it only fair that when I find something good, it's appropriate to acknowledge that. Dear friend of mine, business partner, uh, son of Trinity County, dropped dead a week ago in Hayfork. No heartbeat, no nothing. People there didn't know what to do. The only thing they knew what to do was call nine-one-one. Got the very first of first responders, uh, talked to a person who's never done CPR through the process. And was able to keep blood flowing long enough for Hayfork Fire Department to respond. And then, uh, life support, who shocked him not once, twice, but five times. And brought a heartbeat back. Was able to be life flighted out to Redding and woke up yesterday.
Wow.
So that, and that, you know, is a miracle. And the miracle workers were right here, local first responders, sheriff, CHP. So I want to acknowledge that, give a hearty handshake and thanks to our sheriff's department, all our first responders, life support. And to, to place this within your jurisdiction, I do want to remind everyone that CPR saves lives to the extent we can, you know, I started thinking, you know, I haven't had that. Refresh your class sometime. We, we all should, to the extent maybe there's grants out there. Anything we can facilitate to make CPR training available. We, we, we live here in the hinterlands, we love it. But it, sometimes things go wrong, so it's good to have that training. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Tom.
Okay, getting better anyway.
Any other in the room? And still no online?
Still no raised hands or comments.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break and then we'll deal with the consent calendar and move on. To save a bit of time. Okay, thank you for rejoining us. We're going to move forward now with reports and announcements, and then we will move into the consent calendar, which I mentioned previously. Reports from department heads.
Good morning, everyone. Christine Gaffney, Auditor Controller. I just wanted to take a second to share that Trinity County has received an award for financial transactions reporting for the fiscal year of 23, excuse me, 22, 23, from the State Controller's Office. I wanted to, I want people to understand that this is due to the hard work and dedication and teamwork, not only from the Auditor Controller's Office, but from all fiscal departments. Without the transactions that are being done every day, we wouldn't be having anything to report. So I just wanted to let everyone know how important it, how, well, to recognize how fortunate Trinity County is to have such a great countywide fiscal team. And that was all.
Thank you for that. Congratulations to you and all.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
I have none online.
Okay. I do want to acknowledge that this, this week, we received a number of online updates, email updates, if you will, from members of this department head's team. And in particular, I, I had asked Director Kokas, when I saw his update on transportation, if he would have a chance to speak, but he was tied up with other commitments. So I did just want to highlight that not only was he able to report that we had completed some repairs in Southern Trinity in record time, and it was impressive to see how that came about and see some of the pictures. But I also love that in that kind of solution-oriented way that we've marked up as a value, they had worked to repurpose some funds that we were going to lose access to and put them back to use in a creative way that can help people with transit throughout the county. And I just, I couldn't let that just be an email sitting in my folder, so I just wanted to make sure at least to highlight that. And for those who don't see those all the time, just know that there is a tremendous amount of great work going on. And also Liz Hamilton with the Health and Human Services update, I thought it was really impressive, some of the things there. In fact, I, I shared with our Public Information Officer to say, hey, there's some really good news here that we should be sharing with folks. So hopefully we'll see more of that come out. But Trent, to you and your team, thank you. There's, there's so much great work, and I know we don't spend a lot of time talking about it here, but it's, it's helpful to know what's going on and appreciate that it is.
Thank you, Chair.
And we'll go to you.
All right. Couple of things before I get into my prepared notes. I, I do want to also echo, you know, what Christine said and brag on her a little bit more. You know, they, they also just got finally caught up with all of the claims batching and processing a couple of weeks ago. And that is a big deal because that, you know, affects all of our vendors, it affects people getting paid, you know, that work on behalf of the county, and, you know, affects our utility payments. It affects everything associated with county operations. And that was a huge push. There was lots of after hours, after hours put in to get that done. And, you know, that involved, like Christine said, not only her staff, but all the fiscal staff. So really a big shout out to all them who, who made that happen. And then the, Chair, your, your comments about, you know, some of the other department head reports, we are working through with, with the PIO and also our new webpage that will be launched probably in mid-December, assuming we keep on track right now. And those department head reports are going to be made more available. They're obviously available right now. If, you know, people want to see them, we can send them out. DOTs are very readily available. Others are available. It's just a little bit different how to get to them. There are lots of highlights in there, lots of incredible work going on across the county. And we are currently, you know, working on how to highlight that better for members of the public if they have questions about anything, and then they just will know, you know, what, what county staff is doing on, on their behalf. So lots, lots of great work. The, the project down in, in Southern Trinity, you know, just to highlight why that really happened is because the, you know, this board authorized DOT to hire a additional part-time engineer to manage projects like that. And she is the reason predominantly, you know, that that effort got as far along as it did, not only Penos and all of his staff, but because, you know, he was able to hire that another full-time engineer to do that type of work. Well, let me say not a full-time, but a part-time engineer who is fully certified and recognized with a professional engineer stamp that they are able to push projects like that along. A few other updates. So Sister City, the board, during our last meeting, we approved a resolution. And since that meeting, we've been notified that Weaverville, North Carolina, has also adopted a Sister City resolution. There's been some dialogue with the mayor and his staff, and donation efforts are moving forward locally. HRN is going to be the focal point for those collections, and then those will be provided to Weaverville, North Carolina. We are working with HRN and will push information out in addition to what they're going to do through the official county social media sites and websites as far as, you know, how people, if they choose so, can join in that, in those donation efforts. But it's neat to see that that, you know, reciprocal action took place from Weaverville, North Carolina, and that there is a partnership in the forming stages happening there. I'd like to also thank all those involved in some recent property cleanups. Both county staff and private groups have been involved in cleanup efforts on some county property near the bridge on Lance Gulch Road. More efforts are planned to finalize, you know, that specific location, and then there'll be some ongoing monitoring. And then I just also like to, you know, remind everyone that there is no overnight camping on county property in accordance with current Trinity County Code 8.40.030. So we are working through the enforcement efforts on that, trying to, you know, work through the environmental compliance aspects, environmental mitigation, and working with various groups to, to make this happen. But I'd just like to thank everybody that's involved with this because there's both county staff and private groups that are helping in, in this effort. I attended the California Association of County Executives Forum, which is basically all the county CAOs and CEOs about two weeks ago. Lots of good information shared and some good takeaways. One topic is how some other counties are pursuing local tax increases to generate revenue to offset the rising costs that, that we've been talking about and that we shared with everybody during the last budget cycle. Another big topic was jail medical. As you know, we're making some adjustments with our jail health budget in an effort to pursue additional revenue through the state. Many other counties have been doing similar actions and are taking similar steps that, that we are. So that effort will be ongoing. And it was encouraging to dialogue with other counties on how they're doing things, and we'll, we'll share some of that. The artificial intelligence topic was also discussed and, and how counties are incorporating that into their normal routines and processes. It's very much in its infancy stages. There are some, some pitfalls. There are some areas to be aware of, but there's also some areas for potential, for potential use here in, in the county, and we're in that very early just kind of experimentation phase. Then another topic was the overall county, you know, budgets were talked about, and, and believe me, we're not the only county that has budget concerns from large counties like Orange County that has an approximate $9.5 billion, yeah, that is a billion-dollar budget, to Monterey County, you know, to Butte County, more local. All counties are looking at, you know, service cuts. Some counties have actual personnel hiring freezes in, in place. So there are issues out there. There are some items on this current ballot in different counties. So after the, all the elections are certified and done, we're going to do a little review and, and kind of see what, what passed and what didn't, and maybe the help, that, that will then help our local strategy as far as what items we can pursue. And before the end of the calendar year, you know, I'll be advocating for some type of county multi-year strategy for additional, potential additional revenue. There's also been some recent questions or dialogue on social media about the opioid settlement funds. I just want to make everybody aware that yes, Trinity County did opt into that, and we are currently receiving those funds. That is a Department of Justice administered program. There's very specific guidelines associated with how those funds can be used, and we are working through that process right now. We do have a local opioid consortium set up with not only county staff, but other interested organizations and agencies throughout the county to come up with ideas and methodologies for how those funds should be used, and that, that process is, is ongoing. Been working the library and animal shelter MOUs. The library MOU is signed and completed. There has been an assistant librarian identified through partnership interview process with friends of the library and county HR staff, and the anticipated start date for that new assistant, part-time assistant librarian is November 15th. Like to thank both organizations for helping support that and, and making that selection, and I think we're going to be well-served. As far as library hours, those will be adjusted effective November 12th. Attorney Center library hours are unchanged. Hayfork will be open Tuesdays and Thursdays from 12 to 4:00. Weaverville location will be open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 11 to 5:00. Those are different operating hours. Those are being published through the different library branches and through the different individuals who utilize the library. But again, that's, those hours will go into effect November 12th. We're very close to finalizing the MOU with TASSA for the animal shelter, and I'm hopeful we can have that finalized by the end of the week. We're just kind of working some, some nuances back and forth with, with TASSA right now. And I, I thank them and all of their members for working through the MONE negotiation process and for the monetary contributions that they are willing to provide. I'd also like to thank General Services and the Front Office Admin Staff for mounting the seal that you see up behind us there. I think it looks wonderful. I think it will be proudly displayed there for many years to come, and everybody attending here personally, physically in the audience can, can see it, and then those that see it virtually, it's prominently, prominently displayed. The way the cameras see it's right, right behind the, the board members. So very, very happy how that turned out. And like to thank the school staff. And like to thank the school staff and all those school staff and students for their support for that project. Turned out very well. And that is all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to extend gratitude for your work with the MOUs, with the library and the animal shelter. I mean, we all experienced that. That was clearly something that many, many people were very concerned about. And I just appreciate your willingness to work with them to continue those services to the county. Thank you. And thank you, all of the folks who are helping make that become a reality.
I would, I yeah, definitely appreciate that. And it is a good partnership that is has formed, was formed, is forming. I do want to remind, you know, everyone that this is just the beginning of this process, and we can't lose sight of the longer-term challenges that are ahead of us. We often ask ourselves, you know, well, why don't we hear about, you know, these issues before, you know, budget hearings? Well, we've been talking about these issues the whole time I've been here now. We talked about them extensively during budget hearings, budget adoption. And we can't lose sight of the the challenges that are still there. That's what my previous reference was, where I'd like to have a overall strategy developed in conjunction with and supported by the board and for us to be able to look two years out and make some decisions as far as what avenues are are we collectively as the county governance structure going to support and pursue in coordination with anything that the local independent community members can also pursue. But I believe that needs to be done in a coordinated and consolidated effort so we have the best likelihood for success. I believe we can do that. But, you know, as we get into the holidays, as we're going to get into a new year before we can even blink our eyes, I don't want us to lose sight of the significant effort that that is going to take to make a decision to get something potentially on a ballot if that's the course that's pursued or other funding avenues. And those are not just quick, hey, let's decide to do this in a week and get them on, and they're done next week. These are multiple months, actually multiple years, to do them right and to allow for the most likelihood of of quote, success. So that's kind of what I'm looking at and trying to make sure that we're we're setting ourselves up for that. And I will be the squeaky one reminding us, hey, we got to get this done. We got to get this done. This is not a county staff decision. This is a, you know, county governance structure, but in coordination with the community. So we we need to not lose focus of that, that this is really just getting us through the rest of this fiscal year, these MOUs. And I'm very, very grateful for the funding that has been put forth. Don't let me underemphasize that. Very, very, very grateful for that. But that is not the long-term fix either. And that's what I'm trying to help us start focusing on is that, you know, not only for 25, 26 budget development, but for 27, 28 really is what we're looking for.
Thank you. Supervisor Hogan, let's start with you for supervisor updates.
Out of county travel was to Delort County for the NCRP North Coast Resource Partnership. Heidi's the primary and I am the alternate. I was not able to make it, so I went myself. And it's a great collaboration with six or seven counties on the North Coast here. We went over a full day of funding, which will be in the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars for at least five projects that we know of now. Myself and Heidi are also on the illegal cannabis cleanup ad hoc, which we had a lot of discussion about, you know, cleaning up some of these old grows, we'll say, and illegal cannabis spots in our county and other counties. And there was some, I'll say dispute between the heavier counties, we'll say, ourself and Siskiyou, who have a lot of illegal cleanup to do in other counties like Delort that doesn't have that much cleanup to do in their county. So with that being said, they're going to have the legal cleanup ad hoc. I mean, Heidi, you're on, go from one day to two days, starting in the beginning of next year, which I really think is is needed. The the breadth and scope of the cleanups is maybe even more than than I can imagine dollar-wise. And certainly some of the other counties that don't have the amount of cleanup that we have to do. So a lot of work done there. We made some good strides forward. It's a great group to be part of. And we're, you know, we have two great participants with Heidi and myself on there. And and all the other supervisors from the other counties that are there are really bought into every aspect of this. So I want to thank them for joining up. And hopefully we'll be able to host this meeting again next year when it comes around. And that was it for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Hogan, just question, when you say moving to two days, I didn't follow that. So what?
Currently, the the legal cannabis ad hoc is a one-day meeting.
Okay.
And now
Thank you.
Because of some of the discussions that we had and maybe some of the other counties not realizing how vast the cleanup may be, that we are going to change it, they're going to change it to two days in the following meetings.
Thank you.
And clarity, if I could, you said that both of you are on that ad hoc. Does that just mean the one that can go to the meeting sits in the chair? Or that both of you are supposed to be there?
Say it again.
Just one of you goes.
One of you goes that there may be some news coming that we will both be able to participate without using county funds to participate. And CRP possibly will be taking over that.
Nice. So the result would be we would have two votes at that table.
Yes.
Nice.
Not cost the county, hopefully, any travel reimbursement money.
And for those who are maybe not following that conversation, it could be code to you, but clear to us. The board previously decided due to our budget constraints that even though there's value to multiple supervisors being at a lot of these committees and boards that we're assigned to and their association meetings, we just can't afford it. So now unless there's an extreme situation, only one person goes. So in this case, you have two people who could be there, both for the meeting in general as well as for the ad hoc committee, which is obviously an important one to us. And yet, right now, we can only send one. And so we're we're moving along, and it's great to see that there could be some help coming from the other side. So thank you for that. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Setting next to Liam sometimes is a challenge. I'm just going to say that out loud. We should get to have a little fun, I guess. I I attended the LAFCO meeting that was right after the last Board of Supervisors meeting. And we helped that organization work through some of the issues with the the Pines Community, Post-Mountain Community with their their volunteer fire department and some of the other necessities that they need up there to try to continue moving that forward with their service district. So that's a a challenge for that community. But I'm glad to, there was quite a number of people came speaking into the fact that they want to maintain that. So the work will continue on that. I did go with the collaborative on the tour of the Big Ranch project. And we looked specifically at the section of the project that's coming from Burt Ranch over to the South Fork Road. That was heavily attended, and it was a very, very good a very, very good meeting out on the ground. And I just have to to say this, I I love that the Forest Service wears their uniforms. It just, to me, it just speaks back to my childhood. My dad was a Forest Service guy, and so I just really appreciate that. And then I also noticed while I was on that meeting, the number of women in natural resources has dramatically increased. When I started with NRCS in 2001, I was often the only female in the room on the tour anywhere. And so it was just fun to be able to go to that meeting and see how many young ladies are pursuing pursuing careers in natural resources. It made me very happy. I also have been attending the NACO Rural Action Caucus and the Public Land Zoom Meetings that happen monthly. I attended the VOAD meeting and might be missing some, but a lot of zooming time. But otherwise, just responding to emails and living in the community that I hope I'm serving well. So I appreciate that. I do want to say I really, really hope that at the end of this night, or maybe in a few days, that at the end of all of the work that's being done to get people elected or not elected or what have you, that we can really just come together as a country and as a community and lay some of those bitter words and angry words aside. And remember that what's most important is that we're here for each other as neighbors and as community members. And at the end of the day, we we just really, I think, I personally want a very cozy, happy holiday season. And I would really like it to see other people. So I love all of the postings about the the community events that are occurring. And I would encourage all of you to buy local if you can and enjoy our local artisans and crafters and just really take the time to enjoy your community and be part of the good thing that is America. So hopefully, we'll all be smiling in one format or another.
Thank you. Supervisor Frazier.
I had no out-of-county travel. Did attend LAFCO meeting, and there was, I'll kind of add on to what Heidi discussed about that. At at LAFCO, we did adopt a resolution of intent to initiate dissolution of the Post-Mountain PUD. So that essentially gives Post-Mountain 12 months to show progress. And we'd already done basically the same thing before. I can't remember what the exact title of that was. They had made some progress, but they haven't made the progress required at this point. So they have another 12 months to get to that point. Or their PUD will be dissolved. And what's done by their PUD will be taken over by Trinity County and probably by Hayfork Fire to do fire. And the county would acquire Post-Mountain Roads, which would be just what Penos wants to do. So anyway, that's the update on that. Because I have got some questions about the Post-Mountain PUD. Also, at that meeting, the president of their PUD board, I think his title was president, resigned. He handed handed his letter of resignation to myself and to our LAFCO agent. I didn't give that letter to Trent because while he handed me a letter of resignation, it wasn't signed. So if, I haven't talked to him since then, but if he would like to get a signed copy of that to Trent, I don't know what to do besides that. So and then, other than that, on Thursday, I will be attending the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District Board Meeting in Eureka.
That's next week, did you say?
No, Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Thank you, sir. Supervisor Cox.
Back to Wednesday, the 16th. Was pleased to be in conversation with Senator McGuire as he met with our fire chiefs and awarded them a million dollars, which they have at this point unofficially. But the conversation is they are choosing to use that. It had to be a unified decision throughout all 14 districts. And what they need most is vehicle extrication equipment. So that will certainly serve our emergency responders who are have had incidences where they are unable to help victims because our firefighters simply don't have the proper tools to get them out of the vehicles. And so that is a wonderful contribution to the safety of our community and certainly appreciative of the senator's efforts on our behalf. I attended the Weaverville Community Plan Community Meeting on the 16th. The meeting was sparsely attended, but there were great conversations there. I think a lot of people got a lot of questions answered. And I just would encourage those places, this is my observation. When I see folks get nervous about different pieces of what looks like decisions being made at this point, it always appears to me to be we just don't understand the process and what point of the process we're at at this time. So if we can breathe and ask that question, what point of the process are we at? And how do I speak into that process seems to help a lot. And that certainly was the case at that meeting. And I really appreciated our consultant and the way that he engaged with our community. And the outcome, I thought, was great. On the 17th, I attended the California Rural EMS Funding Coalition Meeting. That is a coalition I have chosen to be a part of. It's an outgrowth of my participation in NorCal EMS. We approved our mission statement and then will are choosing at this time to not have to adopt bylaws. It's a very collaborative cooperative group. Don't feel that that's necessary at this time. We're just moving forward and looking for statewide support on those initiatives going forward. On the 21st, I chaired the PSA2 Area Agency on Aging Meeting. That Advisory Committee Report was what I mentioned when Director Dobbs was still in the room. I'm just so pleased at the way that our advisory committee really actively speaks into what PSA2 looks to be funding for or channel dollars toward. They identify what are the needs on the ground with our aging population. And so as I shared with her, we have one of our members working to get in-home care services expanded into Weaverville and Junction City. It's just a huge area of need. So we do have one position yet to be filled on that council. And so, you know, I'm sure that we could use our public information officer to kind of spread the word there. But if you or you know someone who would love an opportunity to really make a difference in how we meet services of those of our older population, it is a wonderful way to have meaningful conversations that do end up in action steps, and you see those things fulfilled. So you don't end up feeling like you're just spinning your wheels. It really is a place to get involved if you're interested. The executive director did report that they've not been able to finalize the contract for the funding that comes into our Roderick Senior Center because the annual audit was delayed due to lack of timely provided information to the auditor. So hopefully, that will all get turned in, looked over, cleaned up, and trust that that funding will be able to continue. Was in conversation a couple of times over the past couple of weeks with the library proponents, looking how they want to pursue future funding options and have offered the same to the animal shelter folks as we look down the road as our CAO was expressing. I also met with Molly Stumpel. She works for Shasta College through the Shasta Tahima Trinity Adult Education Program. And there are some really interesting ways by which we as adults can return to components of our own educational experience to further the job or career opportunities that folks might want to seek. And it's just wonderful to see how Shasta College is so innovative and really, I think, on the cutting edge of ways by which they find funding to cover needs of adults who have responsibilities in life to allow them to, you know, have an avenue to continue higher education. So if that is something that you're interested in, you know, do reach out because there are some wonderful opportunities there for you. Firesafe Council Meeting. My only out-of-county travel was my quarterly meeting with Forest Supervisor Berkey. We discussed the Minersville Boat Ramp. We discussed fire season aviation regarding to airport closures. We discussed next year's Forest Service Fiscal Budget, the Volunteer Fire Department MOUs, and also removing barriers to completion of the alert camera, observation cameras that our Forest Service update described today. First five, we discussed details surrounding the MOU that you will see we have on our consent calendar coming up. So this MOU represents a trial period whereby the duties of the Executive Director that we did just recently lose will be handled by a program manager within HHS as a means by which to streamline processes and allow for braiding of funding options to help ensure that continued services to our zero to five population continue amid all of the declining budget that we do see going on around us. On the 21st, I did facilitate our volunteer economic development professionals, professionals as they reviewed our TOT funded project proposals. And then on the 28th, we had an airport advisory committee meeting. Our local pilots met with Director Kokis and his assistant. They discussed airport hangar contracts and requested that they could have a seat at the table to look at a contract that may better reflect needs and desires from both sides of the table, which Director was certainly open to. Appreciate that. They discussed fire season, airport closures, and a potential MOU to assist with work in and around their hangars. And then on the 30th, I attended the first hour of the two-hour Community Forest Annual Meeting. Always informative and good to hear from all of the different partners that do work on our community forest. So thank you to Bethany Llewellyn of the RCD for her coordination and all of the partners who provided updates and answered good community questions.
Thank you. Okay, mine is a little lengthy too. Economic Development. I met with representatives of the Siskiyou Economic Development Center and the Small Business Development Center about services that and support that they can provide in Trinity County. And presentations are being arranged to the board. I believe it's December 3rd. It will be on our agenda. And they were also on this month's meeting with the OES Disaster Council because there are services they can actually help us with during those times as well. So it was a productive meeting and we have some follow-up to make sure that we really take advantage of those services that are available to us. On Workforce Development, attended the recent NorTech Board Meeting in Chico, where Susan Marie of our Highlands Art Center and Foundation was elected as Chair of the Workforce Board, and I was elected as Chair of the Governing Board. So Trinity County now rules NorTech. To the extent that the Chair rules anything. But it is great that we're both, you know, we both were selected by the members. It's a 40-person collective board. And so Susan Marie and I will be working together to lead those meetings as we go forward, which is great. Tourism. Met with members of the Trinity County Chamber of Commerce and their new consultant who is taking the lead in establishing a solid foundation for their marketing efforts. You know, we'd had someone before, some of you may have met or heard of. That person has moved on. There's a new person who has a completely different approach and set of skills that they're bringing. But I was impressed with the the thoughtfulness that was going into how we would make sure that the work that's being done is going to be impactful and then the ability to actually measure it, that impact. Community Plans. Attended both the Lewiston and Weaverville Meetings. Wanted to acknowledge public comment is open until I have 11:05, but I think that's typo, isn't it? November 15th? Yeah, I must have typed just been too fast. And as Supervisor Cox was mentioning, I hope people do you know, recognize that we're still very much in the process. Nothing has been approved in this whole process yet. But we have already closed the comment, public comment period for the general plan. We have until the 15th for the community plans. And then there will still be a process where that comes back before the Planning Commission and the Board. So please, as I noted, too, fairly low turnout at these meetings. Maybe people were just burned out. But you hear all the time, people want to have more say over what happens in their communities. Here's your chance. Senator McGuire was able to appreciate the invitation, join for that. That was really great to see. And just a little color on that extrication equipment. One of the fire chiefs described for the Senator that our current equipment in many of our places is a generator, which is fairly heavy, and then about a 70-pound piece of equipment that's hooked up to hydraulic lines. So now picture that a car has gone over the river, over the ravine into or near the river, and that's what you have to carry down the steep incline or ravine to get to them. It's and the battery-powered ones, which I was able to use back in the day when we were testing them out, are lighter, stronger, and it's really truly life-saving opportunity for to get all those upgraded. So I couldn't have been more thrilled to see them get that money. Water District met with a representative of Water District regarding concerns and plans to bring some matters before the board. Those will be on the agenda here in the near future. Joined Supervisor Cox, who is our primary representative to the Airport Advisory Committee. Trinity Center is actually one of the most active and highly populated in terms of hangers and so forth. And really, at this time, the only one that we qualify to get federal funding for. So I generally try to stay in touch with that. Library joined the meeting of the Friends of Library at their request and just impressed with how that group is really digging in to figure out how they can make the most of the situation and, you know, what will be announced as the hours or have been announced as the hours for coming up here on the 12th would be very, very different if it wasn't for their help. So very appreciative. And similarly for TASSA, I just haven't been involved in their meetings yet. And the last thing I want to focus on is homeowners insurance. I had previously joined the CSAC Working Group that's focused on this, and I've been participating in their calls. And this last call was very interesting. They had an expert on disaster modeling and how that is used, how it's worked, how it's done, but also how it's used. And we also provided in final input on what will be a CSAC, the County or Statewide Association of Counties platform document. And so it's, you know, what position are we taking? What do we think are the big issues? Those kinds of things. And it was, I think that group has been doing a great job. Then I found, came across the document from the Little Hoover Commission, who has been doing similar things. And I reviewed their document, and I will say I have not read every single word. I skimmed it. But in my skimming, I was actually concerned because while I don't disagree with a lot of their plans and and outcomes, it seemed that our small community data was being lost in the shuffle. And one example I would just give you is there was reference to, you know, Californians, that weren't their words. I'm being a little facetious, but you know, Californians need to understand that they're not paying as much maybe as they think. There's other states that are, you know, also highly at risk with like Florida and Louisiana and so forth, and they're paying even more in insurance. They have an average of $2,400 a year. And so in my comments to the Little Hoover Commission, I said, well, you know, people in Trinity County would be dancing in the streets if they could get insurance for $2,400. So when you tell me that California has a less than $2,400 average, I don't care. You know, what we care about is our local communities and what we're affected by. So I'm really happy to announce that the Fire Safe Council launched a survey last night that is going out to everyone. It'll be in the newspaper so people can access it. But it is together, real-time, dig in a little deeper data about homeowners insurance and its impact here in Trinity County. And it was really exciting that this morning I looked it up and we already had 31 responses this morning. So I hope that, you know, when it gets in the paper as we continue to promote it, because it literally was just sent out last night, we will get a lot of great feedback. And we're asking for things like, how much are you paying? How much has it gone up? Have you been non-renewed? Have you tried to get the discounts that are available and you haven't been able to get them? Are you aware of the defensible space then? You all, we're trying to just both educate, but also learn at the same time. And I think it will be powerful and will help us tell our story a little more effectively, I hope.
So will that come through emails if you're on their list?
Yeah, my understanding from talking to Skylar is that they have their email list, and so they send it out to everybody. And then they posted it on, I saw it on social media last night. And then I don't know, I'd already talked to Wayne at the newspaper and he was gonna, he was gonna carry it in the newspaper. I'm sure that we'll be, you know, collectively promoting it online. So yeah, let me know. I'm working with Skylar. So if you, if you want me to get you more detailed information, if you haven't received it and you can help distribute.
Yeah, links on for on community Facebook page, Facebook pages, you know, link just so you can over and go.
I hadn't done that yet because I thought if I do it last night at 10 o'clock when I saw hers come out, but nobody will see it. But if I do it today.
That's helpful that people just poke it and go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Currently on the RCD too, when it says upcoming events, if you scroll down, it's there. That's where I found it.
Okay.
And I want to highlight that. Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to highlight how important that is because Supervisor Lutwiler brought this up to the CSAC Working Group. And initially, because I follow those meetings, not the person, not the delegate, but anybody can hop on and listen. And when he first brought it up to them, they treated it like, oh, what a novel idea, what a great idea to gather data. And it looked like there was like emphasis. And then it fizzled. And then he said, hey, what about, and they kind of just I couldn't figure it out. I'm like, where did this excitement go? But the fact that he is following through and we get on board and really share the link around and make sure that we respond as a community, kind of feels like Horton, here's a who. And we need to say we are here, we are here. And this is our situation because if that data, like the Little Hoover Commission supplies to the state is what they think is reality everywhere, we haven't done our due diligence to say, no, you just don't have all of the information yet. So thank you for walking that out. Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the reports from ad-hocs. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, something from tribal relations?
Nothing to report other than communications continue for their presentation and updates on the materials they want to have provided prior to the presentation.
And that is mid-December?
December 17th. That's the meeting date, yes.
Okay, thank you. And on the tourism partners funding, I know you mentioned it briefly Supervisor Cox. I did want to say as we get started, my understanding is that due to scheduling conflicts, I will be taking Supervisor Gogan's place on this committee so that Supervisor Cox and I can work on that. We originally had planned that this would be presented today. But it just didn't work out logistically to get everything ready. So we're shooting for the December 3rd meeting. And so I'll be working with Supervisor Cox to wrap that up. And we are planning to bring it for the December 3rd meeting. Did you have further details? Because I haven't dug in yet, since I wasn't officially on the ad hoc committee.
I know, I just do want to share with the public that originally, the way that Supervisor Gogan and I set up the process, I was recusing myself off of the presentations because I thought that my few little pieces of gathering some information for one of the projects I expected would be one of the proposals. I thought that that represented a conflict of interest for which I should distance myself. Since then, I checked with the FPPC and also local council and have realized, actually, that's not necessary. And the data that I gathered doesn't put me in a place where I have a dog in the fight for any one project. So in the way that this is shifting now, in order to accomplish the objective, this should move forward quickly, efficiently. I do have the data that was presented to us from our participating economic development professionals. I have all of that gathered. It's all consolidated, ready to show Supervisor Lutwiler, and I think that we should be able to get that done quickly.
Great. Thank you. Okay, as we move on, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, I did want to just speak to one thing you said about the election is it's probably worth taking just a moment to recognize our Elections Department right now because I was watching some sort of a news report the other day and the amount of pressure and stress that is on our elections officials and everybody involved in the process these days is a thousand times more than it should be. So, you know, heart goes out to all those who are stepping up to help the Elections Department and those that are doing this. And as Supervisor Carpenter Harris said, whatever the outcome, move forward. Make the world a better place. Okay, Consent Calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the Board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the Consent Calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the Board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Did anyone from the room have public comment about the Consent Calendar? No. Online?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Did anyone from the Board want to pull any items for discussion? I did just want to comment, one of the things, again, oftentimes probably the public doesn't see these, but one of the things on there is Clerk of the Board Week. And I just wanted to say thank you to all those involved in providing these services because I mean, we're Leah, Mary, Suzie, Trent. We couldn't do it without you. And it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that people just don't know about because it's not so public-facing. So thank you all very much. Now we can non-routinely, or routinely approve it, I guess is what it is. Okay, so we'll take a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The record that was 21 items just got approved that fast. Under County Matters, these items include nonroutine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board, Staff, or Public may request that an item be heard out of order. Does anybody want to hear something out of order? Okay. We'll start with item E1, Clerk of the Board. Pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 8.90.170, consider Stefan Colby's request for exemption from the Code Enforcement Appeal Fee of $1,050 for Notice of Violation Number 1514, potential loss of general fund revenue in the amount of $1,050. Do we have someone to present?
I would assume that Stefan would be here or somebody would be representing him. If that happens or not, but Board, this is a item that you're not considering anything associated with the actual notice of violation, but just the fact that the individual has requested a fee waiver, fee waiver of the the amount that is needed for the appeal itself. The appeal would go to a hearing officer. And that's a whole separate process in accordance with code. So we're only here today to hear the potential financial implications, and then the Board decides upon that.
Thank you. Any online? No? Okay. And for the purposes of the general public, the the only documentation that I saw online from the person requesting this is, was the document saying requesting for that to be waived due to low income? So, yes, sir. Did you, are you speaking on their behalf?
I'm speaking on the behalf of the applicant, not who's staffer, who's ever presenting the item.
Okay, yep.
In case she didn't know.
Oh, go ahead, Suzie. What?
Are, is the applicant allowed to have somebody speak on behalf of them when they noted on their appeal that they were not represented by anybody?
Yeah, I think in this case, it's best just let them speak.
Thanks for checking, Suzie. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Again, Mr. Chair, Board, Tom Balenko, Douglas City, representing Mr. Colby, the applicant in this case. I have a brief statement that's written and I want to hand out because it does involve financial considerations. I'm endeavoring to stay within the agendized item on this appeal. Because you'll see the next agenda item is a second appeal. There are substantive issues that merit an appeal. But what brings us today, in addition to the document you're reading, is the nature of these two NOVs. What is not in dispute is that there is not a county license on the property, and there were cannabis plants, not saying, oh, it was a Christmas tree farm, or it was tomatoes. There had previously been a county license there. There is a county license application in process. The distinction is, and I have the old county license, both of these parcel numbers are listed on this license. The site map for the new application, again, is one license that encompasses both these parcels. Technically, parcel viewer, this is two APNs. But for the purposes of cultivation, previously, this is a parcel with a license. So what we're asking is consolidate this rather than have two NOVs with two appeals. We're talking about one person in one place with one driveway.
And Tom, I'm sorry, can I pause you? So counsel, my understanding is the board has no jurisdiction over this right now. We only have over, do we agree that there is insufficient funds to pay?
That's correct. The only claim that's been made about the, for the appeal for the fee waiver is the undue hardship. So that's all that's before you right now.
So whatever our decision is on that, they have a separate process that can be taken to deal with what I'm hearing from.
Correct.
Okay, so Tom, I just wanted to be clear. We need, as you said, you were trying to stay focused and education is helpful, but we have to stay focused.
At the barest minimum, I would ask a 50% reduction of each of the two appeals. Further reduction would be outstanding, but we'd ask at least for a 50% reduction on the appeal cost.
Thank you.
The applicant is here. If you have any further questions, obviously, I can answer any questions you may have. I understand we're very limited in what the board's considering. Thank you.
Thank you. So as was just confirmed, you know, stated and then confirmed, so our, our evaluation is strictly on, as it says, requests for exemption for basically insufficient funds to pay. Financial hardship, I guess, is the right word.
Hardship for them to pay the waiver, to pay the fee.
So that's all we're deciding on for this one. All we'll decide on for the next one. And with that in mind, do you have any questions of staff? Or I guess it could be of Tom, since he presented on behalf of the applicant? Okay, we'll take public comment then. None in the room?
Ben?
Good morning. Ben Keller, Weaverville. I'll make this really quick. Not bearing the facts of the case, there's a violation. We're not in a financial predicament to be waiving revenue that's coming into the county. So I would just ask for denial and on that, and the person can deal with the APNs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move denial of the appeal.
I'll second.
Any other motions?
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
So is the motion that you are denying the request for an exemption from payment for the appeal?
Thank you. Correct.
For discussion purposes, I can remember one of these that we've had in the past where we had pages and pages of financial documents that showed what hardship was. And I think that's kind of, for me to determine if somebody has a financial hardship that says they can't pay their appeal fee, I would need to see some actual financial documents. You know, rather than just saying, I can't afford to pay this. There's a lot of things that I would say that about. So I, I can't justify waiving a fee without more information.
Agreed. And further to that point, this isn't even a signed statement that we were provided. There is indication here of what an average tax return showed. But again, it's nothing that's IRS documented. There's indication of a particular responsibility here that the reality of that responsibility is that there are government processes to cover the responsibility listed. And so from that point, I can't support issuing county funds to cover what's asked.
Any other discussion?
Supervisor Frasier? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, item E2, Clerk of the Board, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 8.90.170, consider Stefan Kolbe's request for exemption from the code enforcement appeal fee of $1,050 for notice of violation number 1515. Again, as, as Tom was explaining, for our benefit, there's actually two here, 154, 1514, 1515. There can be discussion about whether there should be two or not two, but, but right now, we're, we're basically considering whether we want to, as the last one, approve or deny the request for exemption. And with that, is there anything from staff to present on this one? No? Okay, public, or I mean, on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Board. Mr. Chair, Tom Balenko, Douglas City. In keeping with my theme, I would ask that we waive the cost on this one. The very same persons will be in the very same room with the very same data. We probably don't need to proceed into appeals, but they have made the case already. So I leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or counsel?
I guess I would have a question of maybe counsel, maybe staff. If the applicant for this exemption moves forward with trying to change this from one appeal to another, to, or from two to one appeal, and that is successful, then they would only be paying one appeal fee, correct? So if.
That would be back to you to consider again as to whether or not that.
But it would, it would be a different agenda item, but if that was approved, then one appeal would just go away. There would be no, you have to pay two appeal fees, even though you only have one appeal moving forward.
If they had consolidated the two appeals or requested at the outset, then there, and that had been approved by you all, then that would have been one appeal fee.
Okay.
And sorry, I was taking notes and trying to listen at the same time, but I think it may be similar. It's just to understand, staff has already reviewed and believes that it is appropriate. There are two notices of violation. And, and that's why we have two before us. And if there was an effort to consolidate the two, that has already taken place, it failed. And now it's basically a matter of appealing these two, and do we want to force payment or not?
That's correct. That's what's before you.
Thank you. All right. No more questions? Any public comment?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion? On everybody at once.
I'll, I'll move to, I'll move to deny the,
Request for.
The request for exemption of a appeal fee.
Wait a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion?
More discussion? If he would have put the two of these appeals together, he would automatically. In the beginning, he would automatically reduce his fee from what it is now to half that if you put both together.
May I?
Go ahead.
No. There's two APNs. There's two NOVs.
Thank you.
Call the vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item E3, Community Development Cannabis. Conduct an appeal hearing to uphold, modify, or overturn the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit for cannabis distribution located at 50 Nugget Lane, Unit Number C, Weaverville, APN 024-500-050-000. Applicant Melissa White and Stefan Sutton, Main Street Distribution LLC. Appellant Timbera Beck. Cannabis Planning File CDL-24-01. And Drew, you're going to lead us off?
Good day, Chair Supervisors. Drew Plavani, Cannabis Division Director. Thank you for the introduction to the item. I guess I will take you all through kind of the history of, you know, how this item went to the Planning Commission and is now before you all today. The item was presented to the Planning Commission on September 12, 2024. And leading up to taking it to the Planning Commission, right about the time that we were finalizing the staff report, we received communication from the now applicant to this appeal, Timber Beck stating that, you know, she had concerns that her business should qualify as a youth-oriented facility. So the way that we agendized the item for the Planning Commission was to ask that the Planning Commission make a determination under the ambiguous code section to basically resolve whether or not the business, Trinity Dance and Fitness, should be, should be determined to be a youth-oriented facility. At the Planning Commission, there was a good bit of discussion. And hopefully, some of all of you were able to watch the Planning Commission meeting. But essentially, the outcome of the meeting was that the item passed, three ayes, one abstention. And there were a couple modifications to the proposed conditions of approval, primarily related to the issue of the bus stop on Nugget Lane. And then specific to the youth-oriented facility. That was not specifically addressed in terms of a formal determination being made by the Planning Commission. Subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing, we did receive an email from the Douglas City School District, just basically sending us a list of the approved bus stop locations, which ultimately culminated in the approved bus stop location on Nugget Lane being directly in front of the Tangle Blue. So from staff's perspective, the issue of the proposed distribution location not meeting the setback requirements related to the bus stop, that that has been resolved. The school district has sent us an authorized, you know, a list of the authorized school bus stops for this school year. And so that is approximately 600 feet from the proposed location, so it does meet that setback requirement. In bringing this item to you all today, you know, I basically prepared it in the same way that it was prepared for the Planning Commission where, you know, in staff's evaluation leading up to taking that item to the Planning Commission, we came to the conclusion that it was a subjective decision based on an ambiguous code section in terms of whether or not that business should qualify as a youth-oriented facility. And I'll go ahead and read the definition of youth-oriented facility. Ultimately, at the Planning Commission, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the commission, but my conclusion and understanding of, you know, the discussion that happened was that they didn't feel they had enough information to make that decision. And I think that concurred with staff's evaluation in terms of, you know, the ambiguity of the definition. So I'll go ahead and, and read the definition. Youth-oriented facility means public park and any establishment that advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors or the individuals who regularly patronize, congregate, or assemble at the establishment are predominantly minors. I could go on. I think that's a bit of a, you know, introduction to the item. I imagine you all may have questions for me, so I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for Drew before we move to the next phase? Yes?
What's the original date of the application?
Original date of the application?
In the board packet, there was an application, but it was a blank fillable PDF.
So that blank fillable PDF was an application for a DCC distribution license. And the reason that that was included is that it states on the application for the distribution license with the DCC that they, well, it evidences that they use the term youth center in terms of state code and setback requirements. And so on that application, it shows that the requirement, the required setback distance from a youth center is 600 feet. So I believe that is the reason that that application, blank application, was included just so you all could see what the requirements of a DCC distribution license were. But that is not the application that was received for this conditional use permit to the county.
And so the answer to my question would be?
Are you asking what was the application date for the DCC application or for the county application?
County.
If you give me a minute, I'm sure I can tell you, but I don't know offhand.
Did you have other?
Quickly, on a follow-up to that, while you're talking about the DCC and their youth center, do you have the definition of youth center from the state?
I believe that I do. It's in the Planning Commission staff report.
It's in here.
Give me one second and I will pull it up.
Supervisor Cox, the application was received on June 20, 2024.
Thank you.
So California Health and Safety Code 11353.1, subsection E2, youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors, including but not limited to private youth membership organizations or clubs, social service teenage club facilities, video arcades, or similar amusement park facilities.
Okay, Supervisor Cox, you had more, I believe?
I, I would like to know when the cannabis division reached out to the dance studio for their business clientele data.
The cannabis division did not reach out to the dance studio for their business clientele data. We made the assessment based on the information that was publicly available, both on their website at that time and their Facebook page at that time. We do detail the evaluation that staff made in the Planning Commission staff report. And so ultimately, where we landed was, you know, that, that specific code section, youth-oriented facility, in my opinion, is, is quite ambiguous. And I can reread it again and point out the conflict or the ambiguity that I think exists, but I'm sure.
I don't need that. I have it in front of me.
I'm sure that's apparent to you all. So we did an evaluation based on the information that was publicly available. Given that, to me, it doesn't, it seems problematic to reach out to a business owner to ask what their intent is, given that they are opposed to the proposed use. It doesn't seem like an, an objective source of data.
We can have a conversation about that maybe later when it's time for discussion. But I would have some feedback for you on that.
Sure. And, and just to, you know, to clarify the position that staff took was that we didn't feel it was appropriate for staff to make a determination, which is why we brought it to the Planning Commission under the ambiguous code section for the Planning Commission to make that determination.
And then my final question at this time, at what point did it come to the cannabis division's attention that the applicant intended to offer a self-imposed 2% tax were the project approved to move forward?
I believe that that came to our attention formally at the Planning Commission hearing. I believe that that came to our attention formally at the Planning Commission hearing.
So not prior to that, you didn't know that that was a part of the intent?
The applicants can maybe clarify. It may have been mentioned in one of our application intake meetings, but was not formally part of their project description, as I recall.
But it was part of the information that was presented to the Planning Commission. So at some point, it was received by the Cannabis Division because it was part of the backup data.
I don't believe there's any reference to that in the staff report, and I believe that that came as a result of the applicant's time to speak to the Planning Commission where they referenced that.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Drew?
So as in the timeframe of this tax that we're talking about, Drew, obviously that would take years to get a tax put on the roles for this if it was going to happen. So I don't see this as a question mark. You know, I think it'd be very hard to have someone to just put a tax on something right now during this appeal. So I think we can probably disregard that in a way.
And I did do some research into that topic following the Planning Commission, just to kind of understand how that might work, you know, in terms of is that something that the Planning Commission could have included in their motion? Are there, you know, specific mechanisms or procedures that need to be followed in order to establish that? And my conclusion, and I apologize, I don't remember the code section, but there is a way for someone to donate to the county. So that, to me, would be the mechanism. It wouldn't be a formal tax per se because it's not included in Measure G currently.
Any other questions before, we'll have discussion later, but questions for Drew? Okay, thank you, sir. Hear from the appellant. Me?
Do you want a timeframe on this?
Ten minutes.
Good morning. My name is Timber.
I'm sorry, I was thinking I was hearing Supervisor Fraser was suggesting, I was asked about a timeframe, and so we're going to establish ten minutes. And so I was letting her know, but wanted to make sure you knew before you stepped up to the, to start using your ten minutes.
Thank you. All right. My name is Timber Beck, and I am the owner of Trinity Dance and Fitness Studio, also known as Trinity Dance and Karate, located at ten Nugget Lane in Weaverville since twenty nineteen. I started this business by myself. I've never had any partners. I've had just a tremendous outpouring from the community, from family and friends who have helped me build this. And I've along the way been able to have two independent contractors for a time. But it's, it's, it's me there. And I'm appealing the Planning Commission's September twelve decision to quote, and this was the Commissioner's quote, skip over the fact that I have a youth-oriented facility on Nugget Lane. In the building next to the structure, chosen to be a pot, storage, and transportation business. Project owners said they did not approach me regarding the nature of my business because they quote already knew the answer. Staff report asks the board to determine whether or not the studio is a youth-oriented facility. What I have for you there are copies of my current enrollment, showing about ninety percent of my student membership is made up of children under the age of sixteen, which is standard for us. And this is our twelfth regular semester. It's sixteen total, counting the summer sessions we were able to have. So that stays pretty constant. I did pull also, just at random, one of our other spring schedules because that hikes up quite a bit. So for last spring, we had eighty-six student hours, and of those were six adults. I previously submitted to you and the Commission, the Planning Department, copies of multiple semester schedules showing primarily classes for kids. And in my appeal letter to you, I described the details, including my elementary school teaching tools, lining the studio walls, my affiliation with Reading School, the Arts, a public charter school, as one of their long-established vendors. That's the other page there. It shows when I first became a vendor. That make it absolutely clear that my business is a youth-oriented facility established within the required buffer zones. If you've been inside the studio, if anybody from the Planning Commission, Planning Department had come inside the studio or attended one of our seven showcases to date, there would have been no question. Adults are welcome to join a few specific classes, but the studio and schedule are really designed for and have always been used by kids. This has always been the case. Pictures of my kids filling the performing arts center stage are in every newspaper in the spring and the fall. And then, you know, every, every spring and fall, we were in the newspaper. And there's photos from parents on social media, pictures and programs, the whole program, in fact, are still on our website in our collections. So if anybody working on this had actually looked, they would have seen hundreds and hundreds of pictures of children. And I believe there is one, maybe two of adults. Based on the points and authorities listed in my appeal letter to you and other factors, I ask that you overturn the Planning Commission's ruling caused the revocation of the permit that would allow a cannabis distribution center in the middle of a high-traffic, highly-visible road. Now, a few things have been said that are erroneous, too. That section of Nugget Lane from Glen Road to two ninety-nine is just over six hundred feet long total. The project site sits smack in the middle of it. So when you're talking about buffer zones, there's, there, there is a lot there that needs to be noticed. And I believe you guys have maps showing the, all of the measurements there, too. It's also bordered by homes. It was actually hosted two school bus stops, multiple youth-oriented establishments, as you'll hear today. And these are within buffer zones required by the state and the county, with several business owners on that lane, preparing to make it a family-friendly destination spot for residents once again. In granting, you know, their, this applicant application, I feel like it was a case of if I offered to donate you enough money, please overlook the ordinance. And so I'm asking you to uphold the ordinance that's there. Is Trinity Dance and Fitness or Karate a youth center, youth-oriented facility? Absolutely. I've already told you, we're completing our sixth year here. We've, we predominantly sixteen and under. Those are the kids that come to our program that make up the vast majority of the program. If you would come in the door, you would see signs for babysitter CPR. I teach the other. I teach wilderness, first aid, too. But we're an affiliated American Cross Center, Learning Center for Babysitter CPR. This is for teenagers. We're going to care for infants. I rarely have an opportunity to update our, any of our media platforms. But when you are looking at the classes they listed, such as Zumba, et cetera, these are all classes that we've had at some point in the past or can teach. And they were definition pulldowns of our stocked video library as well. That's not our current schedule. Our current schedule was and remains on the homepage always. And it's all downloadable there. When you look at those social media pages, you also see t-shirts with cartoon characters, Karate Kid references. All of our merch is geared for kids. There's, there was one t-shirt once that we had designed that said, Karate Mom on the back, and it says martial arts kicks sass. So that was a one t-shirt out of all the merchandise that we've produced that would be for adults. All of our inventory minus one or two shoes, literally, and our gi sizes are all for kids, toddlers through teens. The entryway to our studio is designed with a family playroom. So we have a playmat. We have Lincoln Logs. We have monster trucks. We do not have an adult reading library. You know, this is to make kids feel at ease so that they're more cooperative. I have my master's in education. I'm a credential teacher. I also have an administrative credential, and I'm using all of my best practices that I learned from twenty-seven years in the classroom to help these kids come out of their shells so that they will learn martial arts, performing arts, learn how to express and control, and be able to defend themselves rationally first. So when you, when you walk in to the actual dance floor, we have a bar that starts low. We, we don't have many adults that use that, that low bar, and that's the most popular bar. We have hula hoops and hand drums and all sorts of teaching tools that I use for these kids. So it really, there's, there's really no question. In the, in my appeal letter, I also gave you more ordinances from the state that define youth center and youth-oriented facility. And there's, there's no question. There's, there's no question that we absolutely are.
You have a little more time. Do you want to continue or?
You know, you, you guys have this, you have this packet. And I just feel like when we're talking about me regurgitating what's here, I didn't want to take up your time. You know, they, they had a recourse, and that would have been to ask for variance. They didn't. And there may or may not be reasons why. I don't know. But what I do know is I've heard a lot of interesting things about me or my facility, but nobody has come to me or to the facility to see what really is going on there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions right now? Because we can, we can ask questions again of both parties afterwards. Okay, thank you. And just to the point that you made, so our board book was four hundred and ninety-some pages. And almost ninety of them were for this subject. So a lot of information that we've had the opportunity to review. So thank you for that. It helps us understand a little bit more since we can't be directly involved in the process.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now hear from the other party.
Hi.
Hi there.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present our project. My name is Stephen Sutton, and this is my partner, Melissa, and we are here representing Main Street Distribution. First, we would like to address the appeal. Trinity Dance and Fitness is not a youth-oriented facility. The definition of youth-oriented facility in section seventeen four three B ten of Trinity County Code is a public park and any establishment that advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors or the individuals who regularly patronize, congregate, or assemble at the establishment are predominantly minors. This facility has classes for people of all ages. A quick Google search of Trinity Dance and Fitness showed that this facility clearly caters to dancers and fitness enthusiasts of all ages. The exact words were, "Welcome to the only dance studio in Trinity County, surrounded by the Trinity Alps Wilderness Area and Shasta Trinity National Forest." Trinity Dance and Fitness Studios offers performing arts classes to students of all ages. That's right, our dancers range in age from one to eighty-four. We included a screenshot of this business description by the owner of Trinity Dance and Fitness in our rebuttal to the owner's initial comments for the PC hearing. This description has since been completely deleted. The signage on this business mentions different variations of dance and fitness, but does not specify that the business caters specifically to minors or even predominantly. On the Trinity County website, Trinity Dance and Fitness Studios listed business type sports and recreation. The owner of this business also willingly leases to a smoke shop with whom her business shares a wall with. Now, we would like to present our project. What is a cannabis distribution facility? A cannabis distributor is the link between cannabis cultivators and retail stores. In order for cannabis or cannabis products to be sold in the legal market, products must first go through certified lab testing. Testing labs can only pick up test samples from distribution facilities, not cultivators, per state regulations. Once products pass testing, they can then be packaged and delivered to retail stores all over the state. Distribution is the only pathway for farmers to sell their products in the legal market. A distribution facility is not open to the public. It does not sell products to the public. There is no public traffic. Zoning. Our unit is zoned C two. Wholesale distribution is specifically called out as a recommended use for C two zoning in Trinity County Code. In section seventeen twenty-one zero thirty of Trinity County Code, letter N is wholesale distribution. Nowhere in the C two zoning code, with or without a use permit, does it list youth-oriented facilities, gyms, dance studios, or fitness centers as recommended uses. Odor mitigation. All cannabis products will enter the facility through the back entrance. They will arrive in opaque smell deterrent totes. Products will not be visible to the public or detectable by smell. Products will be inside additional smell deterrent packaging inside the totes for another layer of odor mitigation. This facility will be equipped with a photocatalytic oxidation air filtration system, which is considered to be state-of-the-art for odor filtration. Photocatalytic oxidation air filters work by combining UV light rays with titanium dioxide. This reaction breaks down pollutants from the air in the most effective way possible. This machine is harmless and improves overall air quality. There will be absolutely no trimming or manufacturing cannabis occurring at this facility. No live cannabis plants will be stored or cultivated inside this facility at any time. Distributors cannot store live plants in their facilities per state regulations. Security measures. All traffic will enter through the back door under video surveillance. This facility is not open to the public. All employees and visitors must be over the age of twenty-one, and every visit will be documented per state regulations. All windows visible to the public will be tastefully tinted. Inside the building, windows will be reinforced with metal grates, which will not be visible to the public. This facility will include twenty-four seven video surveillance. Recordings will be stored for a minimum of ninety days per state regulations. Bay alarms will monitor this facility twenty-four seven with motion detectors, glass break alarms, including automatic nine-one-one calls if alarms sound. Vehicles owned by Main Street Distribution will be parked under video surveillance and equipped with vehicle alarms per state regulations. No cannabis will be stored in vehicles parked at the facility overnight. Premises access. All business will be conducted through the back door. The front door will never be used unless there is an emergency, i.e. fire. It will remain open from the inside only during business hours in case of such emergency. Tax revenue. Cali Love LLC has paid more cannabis taxes than any Trinity County cannabis operator since the beginning of the cannabis program. We have never been late once. Given the current budget situation, we hope you consider our project favorably as we have a proven track record of producing results and contributing to the general fund. Trinity County's current cultivation tax is based on yield. From one to a hundred pounds cannabis flower is taxed at three dollars and eighty-six cents per pound. From a hundred and one pounds to four hundred pounds cannabis flower is taxed at a rate of seven seventy-two per pound. From four hundred and one to a thousand pounds of cannabis flower, it is taxed at a rate of eleven fifty-eight per pound. If a farmer harvests over a thousand pounds, the rate is fifteen dollars and forty-four cents. In previous Board of Supervisors meetings, Cannabis Director Plavani had suggested that average ten thousand square foot license holder harvests about four hundred pounds. There are currently three hundred and six licensed farmers in Trinity County. If we were able to help all our local farmers who harvest an average of four hundred pounds, we would be able to generate from nine hundred and forty thousand to one point four million from cultivation taxes, depending on which bracket they fall into. The county would also receive, receive sales tax revenue from products sold by our distribution in the county. The county receives tax at the sale from the distributor to the retail and at the final sale from the retail store. This would be a percentage of sales and use tax from the distributor sale and the sales and use tax percentage from the retail sale and the Trinity County retail tax rate. Distributors frequently, frequently take advantage of our farmers. They hold on to product until it degrades or often sell it and do not pay the farmers at all. Melissa and I understand the California cannabis market. We will grade Trinity counters, excuse me, we will grade Trinity County farmers' products by quality and advocate for the best rates available. We will help them strategize on what to cultivate to meet market demands. Packaged and branded farmers will receive the highest pay, and farmers that prefer to sell will need to focus on maximizing production. If we were able to help our three hundred and six farmers make a better living, their income would be infused back into our local economy benefiting our local business ecosystem. Right now, most farmers are living at or below the poverty line. Every week, farmers come into our shop asking how they can get onto our shelves and into other dispensaries throughout the, throughout the state. We want to help them sell their products locally and statewide while helping them build their brands and gain notoriety. Melissa and I have a proven track record of putting the community first in our decision-making process while executing projects. We will operate discreetly and respectfully while facilitating the generation of as much tax revenue as possible. We want to represent the county positively locally, throughout the state, and eventually countrywide. Look forward to the opportunity and hope to make you proud. Thank you for your time.
We just wanted to also add any tax revenue that we were offering to donate, that was a donation. We are, get taxed two point five percent on our We are, get taxed two point five percent on our dispensary. So we thought two percent for our distribution since there wasn't a distribution tax. At no way was that a bribe. That was a contribution to our community.
So, thank you.
You guys have any questions?
Any questions right now?
Not yet, no.
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we take public comment? Okay, we'll open up the public comment in the room?
I want to take a minute and gather my thoughts. My name is Veronica Kelly Alves Douglas City. And I'm sad to actually be here today because I believe the county needs a distribution center. I know the state website lists one active that I know they started a minimum of two years ago, if not longer. That CUP, I don't know what's going with that. We have cannabis equity grant and I, I turned in some thoughts on that. Sadly, I believe these particular applicants were kind of led down a primrose path because I do find them to be good community partners with their cannabis business and their everyday generosity to the community. We come to these meetings, both sides. We tell you what we think, what we see, what we live with. We have those items then drilled down through conversations and decisions, decisions that don't make anybody or everybody happy sometimes, but we come up with something. We're consistently told, trust the process. And this particular definition and subject matter has been discussed on several levels with every ordinance that came before you or the previous board members. We've all participated in some way. To largely sidestep what is, in my opinion, clear, but everybody has their own perception for sure, of what the definition of a youth facility is within Trinity County. Not long ago, we were talking about intention of where to measure the three hundred and fifty feet from the middle of the, the, um, the plant, the cultivation area, other than the, and there was a lot of words about what was the intention, what was the intention? And I, I've been far too involved in these for too long, but I come because this is my community too. And I want cannabis to be successful. I'm ready for that flow of money. Cause I've got a shopping list that I'll come before you all with. Or at least attend meetings to have my input on that as well. And I think there are a lot of good, um, people that have come through this system on the other side and really want to make it work. This is just not the right location. Stat, no other industry in Trinity County that I have found gets this kind of support, grant money or, or, um, meeting time to make their business exist or be successful. Um, we hear, well, there's nothing else that wants to invest. I've talked to two business people within the last three months that would love to, but can't get over hurdles. And there's nobody there to support them. They don't get these kind of meetings or these opportunities. But we have these ordinance in place. If you want to change it, start at the beginning. And even in the current draft that we've had, and of course the public's out of these meetings now, youth oriented facility with the same definition is in the draft for the upcoming ordinance change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
When I was ten years old, I wanted to take ballet. My parents sent me to learn classic dancing instead. When I was thirty years old, I took ballet here in Weverville. I was the only male and the only adult in the class. So when you, when they say this is a dance studio, it's for kids. How many of you go to class to learn to dance? So this is a kids' facility. And you gotta remember that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chairman of the board, board member. Uh, my name is Terod Salt. I'm the owner of G-Force Gymnastics for thirty years of business. We started here in Weverville, um, subsequently down in Shasta and are now back, um, trying to rebuild. There's a lot that has happened here. It's, it's hard for me. I'm just going to say this real quickly because it's hard for me as a coach because I'm very, uh, wanting to encourage, um, and go forward. And I think that there's a lot of encouragement that has happened and needs to happen here still. Distribution centers, um, is definitely necessary for the community and the cannabis industry. Um, the location that's being chosen here just doesn't happen to fit. Um, the laws and ordinances are in place to protect the public and private for people who can or do not understand the laws or way to build or cannot defend themselves because they are minors. The school bus stops, uh, was actually something that I personally took the pictures of and sent to the planning department when I closed escrow on a large piece of property here in town uh, to rebuild the gymnastics center. Um, they, I think, had not done the research that needed to be in place to go before a planning commission. Um, and so there was just some gaps of information that were there. So I thought, well, I should fill them in on it. The proposed location that I bought, the Ninety Nugget Lane, the old Marino's Building, um, was chosen specifically because we had a couple of other places that we could have done. One of the places that we looked into was the old, um, round table and taking over the lease of that property there. But because of its proximity to a bar restaurant, um, we thought that might not work as well as the, the old Marino's Building because it had a bus stop that was directly in front of it. Not just one, but two school bus districts stopped there. So that would be easier for our clientele to be coming from after-school activities. Um, and less disturbance with late night functions and things along those lines. Now, while the distribution center doesn't fall into any of that category, I'm not trying to say that. But by it going into this place and the planning commission allowing it to be there would cause the school bus districts to move in front of Tangle Blue, which puts them twenty feet outside of the five hundred foot, um, for a bus, a school bus stop. Um, it's, oh, I'm sorry, my, my time is up there. I appreciate, I appreciate your time and energy. And I hope that we can go forward making the community wholesome on every endeavor.
Thank you.
Chair Supervisors Lisa Wright-Lewiston. I don't really understand why cannabis, and I was a little bit taken by the derogatory slur of calling it pot. It's cannabis, it's legal in the state of California. We have ordinances here that permit it, allow it. Why we continue to want to categorize it as being unsafe? It doesn't make, you know, that just doesn't make sense to me. I thought we were well past that. You know, but here we are trying to make it seem unsafe. All the code requirements have been met by this applicant. The planning commission found that as well. You know, there are, I guess, use permits that are required of certain types of businesses, in this case cannabis. There aren't for other types of businesses like the smoke shop. That is sharing a, a wall, but my understanding is actually shares a bathroom. When I go by that area, it, it tends to appear to be blight almost to me because of the empty, the torn down, the burned down. You see vagrants there frequently. I can't tell from the outside of that structure on the corner that there's anything youth oriented about it frankly, right? There's Zumba Fitness, Self-Defense, et cetera. So I wouldn't, I don't perceive it that way from the outside. The cannabis is the most highly regulated commodity. It's more regulated than our food supply. They've met all the requirements and the regulations. This is a secure, extremely secure facility. Will not be open to the public. The youth can walk right into that smoke shop. I talked to a teenage father and he was like, that's the biggest like forge to teens right now as this kind of vape pen epidemic. Um, we're dropping our children off at a bar. That has been there for quite a while and they're walking across a golf course. But somehow this completely contained, sealed, secure, regulated, uh, facility is, is, is harmful somehow. I just don't get that we're still in that state, mental state to try to portray it that way. Our cannabis farmers are in extreme need of an outlet. There are people that sitting with their product from last year and we wonder why the tax revenue is not up in that area? Because they can't sell the product. They've had terrible experience with distributors outside this area. This was mentioned. Keeping product turns to like dust, they send it back. They don't pay people when even when they sell it. Something the state maybe should regulate a bit better on the district side. But I'm asking you to, you know, uphold the decision of the planning commission to approve this CUP, to allow this business to move forward. There is no safety concern. And not kind of pigeonhole this as somehow we're, um, endangering youth. Uh, it doesn't make, I don't see any evidence of that or, or anything to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
Hi, my name's Amy Armstrong. Um, I live in Weverville. I'm here on behalf of Dwayne Hereford, who owns the building for the applicant to open a distribution center. Um, Dwayne normally has been retail in this space and retail has picked up and left the county. And so he is certainly entertaining other places, people that would like to rent his building. Melissa has, um, been the most business oriented. She submitted a wonderful plan. She had been working with the county. And, um, he believes this is a viable business. It's not to say that the other businesses in the area are not viable, but I believe and Dwayne believes that there's enough space here where both businesses can move forward and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the, yes?
Hi Chair and members of the board. Um, Chair Shong, owner of Amaze Smoke Kitchen. I am one of the, um, I guess my bus stop, my kids that gets dropped off at the restaurant seems to be part of the issue. Since the last meeting with the planning commission, um, our bus stop has been moved. You know, it really didn't go according to what was planned, um, at that meeting. They did say that I'll probably have to sign some kind of waiver, but that didn't happen. The bus stop has been moved, but you know, I, I figure that, um, like I've said, if that's the sacrifice that we need to take to make this distribution happen, um, it will be what it is. So, you know, I don't have a problem with that. The change did cause some stress, um, in our business operation, but it is something that we will have to deal with. Um, I truly feel that we as a county need a distribution. You know, we have nursery, we have cultivation, we have retail and we don't have a distribution. So that is a part of the, you know, missing, a missing piece of the puzzle. And like Stefan have said, um, why are we allowing other counties to receive our tax money? And why are we allowing them to, uh, have our products move to their distribution and to come back into our county? So I really to, truly believe that, I hope you guys, um, allow them to have their CUP and have this distribution, um, move forward with the business. I think it's only good for, you know, our economic growth in the county. You guys have heard so many things outside. And I think that hopefully you guys will agree with, um, the distribution happening. On a personal level, um, I think with the distribution center being there, I feel actually more secure leaving the restaurant late at night. Um, you know, if they're under surveillance twenty-four hours, I actually feel more secure, my, myself and my family, my kids, leaving late in the night, um, with surveillance to the left side. And Tangle Blue opening until two PM, two AM in the morning, I actually feel more safe. So I, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
Hello, Carrie Hurley. I'm, um, Trinity County resident. My family's been here since nineteen eighty-one. And, um, my parents were San Francisco hippies, so I grew up around cannabis. If you want to know what someone that smokes weed every day cannabis looks like, that's me. So I don't, you know, I'm, I'm really, it's really hard for the cannabis consumers. We're not called users. We're called consumers, just like wine consumers, right? Um, it's been very difficult for us to go from a life of like hiding who you are to finally now we've got legal rights. Well, almost. You know, you, you talk about bi-local, you talk about declining budget. You know, here we are now. It seems like Trinity County wants to have it the way they want it. So you create opt-out zones when you don't want it. And you, and you change the website and remove data, which you can go back and look at archived websites. I don't know if you guys know that. There's a, there's a way to do that. So you can actually see what was printed on her website before it was removed. Um, I think that, you know, creating the illusion of that this is a child facility and that type of thing. First of all, it doesn't look like it from the outside with the smoke shop next door that actually the president of the Chamber of Commerce in Weverville thought was a dispensary. She thought that smoke shop was a dispensary. So this is the ignorance that we're faced with by leadership here in Trinity County. I'm here to tell you that it's false. Remember the delusional fear that was thrown around against the one Trinity dispensary that is open? Sorry Hayfork, sorry Downriver. You, you know, if you're, if you're a cancer patient, you don't get access as easily um, because there's only one dispensary. But the fear was all of this stuff about driving to and from under the influence, about, you know, getting high in the parking lot, about loitering or enticing window dressing for kids, about the, the effect on neighboring businesses and that type of thing. None of it came true. None. It's been almost two years. So are we gonna allow this unsubstantiated fear of how it will affect the children? I grew up around cannabis. I'm, I'm fine. I'm a totally grounded individual. I contribute to my community and many of us do. There's no reason why Trinity County farmers should not be raking in the profits with distribution. When you take a product like, like grapes grown in Sonoma County or something, you send it out for manufacturing, you're losing money. We don't, we shouldn't be losing money anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, I'm sorry, a little louder than I thought. Hello, Chris Losi. And, um, I am a neighbor. Um, I got one of these letters. Cause apparently I live within three hundred feet of the subject property. I'm concerned about empty storefronts on Nugget Lane. Um, you know, I grew up, I grew up back east, I grew up in New Jersey. I grew up very close to a community with empty storefronts. And, uh, it's a bad thing to have a lot of empty storefronts. There was crime, there was homelessness, drug dealers in the corner, that sort of thing. And I'm concerned about, um, you know, a shopping, a strip mall that doesn't have, doesn't have businesses in it. Currently, there's two burned down pizza places on Nugget Lane. I think it's, it's great that there's effort to put in a gymnastics, uh, facility. You know, there's also three. You know, there's also three empties, there were three empty storefronts now with, I guess, four until the Mong Kitchen moved in. Now with this, there will only be two. That's a great thing to have businesses occupying a space. I'm not worried about this distributor's license on children. I have three children and when they take the bus, they get dropped off on the bus next to Tango Blue. When it's nice weather, we walk home. What worries me is homeless people along that stretch of road. What worries me is the poor quality of the road and falling down. If every once in a while I might walk to Tango Blue at night, I'm worried about the fact that there's no light, that, that it's dark and that I don't, you know, I might not see the pathway in front of me. So I think that a business like this, which is not open to the public, that is, that has light, is going to actually be a good safety thing for that area. Now, I'm not a fan of the smoke shop, you know, especially because the door is always open. I mean, go by there and the door is open, you can look right in. But, you know, at least they're open, at least, you know, at least they're open, at least they have lights and they're ready, better than empty storefront. You know, in a perfect world, I'd love to have a children's clothing store and a sporting goods store right there. But you know what? We still can, there's still vacant storefronts in that, in that strip mall and there's opportunities. But people aren't taking advantage of them because I think as we all know, you know, there's not that much demand for commercial real estate in this county, unfortunately. I wish it was better. So, you know, I wish the dance studio, I wish the gymnastics studio the best of luck and I want them to succeed. But I think, I think we need all hands on deck for our community to be running smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go online.
I have Catherine Sidman.
Catherine Sidman, Lewiston Road, Lewiston. I want to imagine a more advantageous scenario for Trinity County, but I can't really do it. A business with a proven track record literally across the street between our only pharmacy and grocery store, causing no problems whatsoever, model citizen in our business community, model business on every level, want to come to a dilapidated eyesore of a strip mall, which is one of the first things people see when they enter our county. And they want to improve it with a business that will also improve safety in the area 24 hours a day. The property owner loves it, the neighbors, all but one, are good with it. And if it ever comes up on the ballot that there's a measure that disproportionately taxes them to the benefit of the county, they're game. And we can't figure out how to say yes. We can figure out how to close our animal shelter, we can figure out how to shut down our library, but the one thing that would move the needle specifically to this strip mall, which, I mean, the idea that the dance studio shares a bathroom with the smoke shop is something I learned today, which honestly, we got to figure out bigger problems before you're upset about somebody moving totes in a back door 350 feet away from you, if that's your business. The idea that we can't get out of our own way and say yes to this is so disheartening to me today, so disheartening. I'm speaking at a conference in Anaheim next week to a national and international group of people trying to figure out how to save farms, legacy farms in California long enough to make it to interstate sales so that we don't permanently and forever lose this legacy of cultivation, which, go ahead and hate cannabis if you want to hate cannabis, but understand that there's a legacy of cultivation that lives here in the Emerald Triangle, which we're definitely a part of, even though we do everything possible to stamp out this industry. Having distribution is one of my talking points at this conference, looking to even maybe get some infusion of money, but we have someone here, grassroots person waiting to do it. Is this going to be harmful to children? Not any more than sharing a bathroom with a smoke shop that spent years under everyone's nose selling illegal products. And nobody could quite figure that out until very recently. So please help us, board, please, please help move the needle for cannabis and for the county.
Thank you.
Ben?
Good morning again, Ben Kellogg, Weaverville. So this one's perplexing to me because as previous people have stated, this is a great community-driven business that we have already. They want to bring another part of their business across the way. It's basically bringing boxes into a building and storing them. It's not a storefront, you're not having, kids probably won't even know it's there unless they hear their parents talking about it. So realistically, it's like having a mini Costco in our neighborhood with, that's without the storefront. It's boxes. Why are we continuing to demonize cannabis? We're not for alcohol, we're not for nicotine. As people stated, we have a smoke shop next door to this place that wants to go. That is the, that is Timber's place. Nothing against Timber. Love the gymnastics place, but it doesn't make sense. And it's not only a smoke shop. If you go on their Facebook page, they are selling CBD gummies. They're selling other CBD products. So how did, so the question I have, how did this business get past this ordinance that the opponents are complaining about? This is, all the kids know about this place. You want to talk about a place that shouldn't be there next to Timber's place? It's this place, we should be talking about that. We shouldn't be talking about a distribution center that's going to enhance this community. Period. We need to get out of our way and pass this, move on and move on to something else. Our board needs to stop getting in the way of progress within this county. We need the tax revenue. Just go on Facebook, look at the pictures. I've taken them just in case they get shut down off the website. There is, you know, bongs that are being sold, lots of stuff that I wouldn't necessarily want my kids walking by and seeing or having a dance studio next to. So please let this through and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Jamie, we can't hear you.
I was working on it, I was trying to get my mute button off, sorry. I'm, I'm with Ben a little bit, mostly. I, um, I, I started out being on here for the purpose of, I wanted to support Timber and Beck and definitely support Terrell and Julie DeSault. They're bringing their business here to the community. Welcome back, obviously. I did want to speak to the board in the sense of, we have definitions that were read to the board this morning. I think they're extremely clear, youth-oriented facility. Obviously it says park only, but we have to think about intent. And then there was another definition and I can't remember the title of it, but it was extremely clear. But there were, there was clear definitions. But I, I am in extreme agreement with Ben that if, you know, we have the Cali Love across the street and so we have distribution. And so what are, what are we doing here? And if, and if we've got, if we're going to argue this whole thing, then, then why aren't we taking a really good look at this smoke shop? And, and what, not only is it, what is it representing? But good golly, what, what has it got going on inside of it? CBD products? You know, I mean, it's like, what's good for the goose is what goods for the gander. Maybe I'm speaking the wrong, wrong saying there, but we, we really need to take a good look at what we're doing here. But the smoke shop right smack dab in the middle of two children's oriented businesses. And, and so, you know, those, those products need to be taken a look at. Why, why are they being allowed to sell CBD products? But then we're taking a real good look at these other people. And so I, I still am very much in support of Timber Beck and Terrell and Julie DeSault. And we need to take a look at definitions and decide what we're going to do and then make a decision and stick with it. And I agree, you know, downtown businesses, but you know what? This is a location, location, location. This is not the only vacant building in downtown Weaverville. So maybe it's not the best location. And I don't think anyone is saying that this is not for Weaverville. It's, you know, it, distribution, find another location. Maybe it's just a bad location. I, I just think it's not the only vacant business opportunity for these people. And have a great day and God bless America.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
Can I still speak a public comment just to answer a couple of questions because I haven't really spoken or?
Yes.
Okay. Our zoning for our building, we have met and every single requirement. We are in a C2 zoning. And we want their businesses to thrive, just like we want our business to thrive and every other, you know, cannabis grower to give them the opportunity. This is the thing, we are all C2 zoning. C2 zoning is not for a youth-oriented facility, a C1 zoning. So we prepared a map for you from the engineers and everyone said, maybe this isn't the best location. I don't think that they realize what we have to go through, how many setbacks we have to meet. So if you look at the map that I attached to you guys, you can see for the bubbles, we are in the only available building that meets all the requirements and all the setbacks. So I just wanted to give a little clarity there because everyone says, oh, we'll move somewhere else. We can't just move somewhere else. You guys set the ordinance, we're following within the ordinance. That's what we're trying to do. And a youth-oriented facility, in that same map, it is all pinned of where our youth-oriented facilities are. And they're all by the bike track, the scout, the scout house. That is youth-oriented facility. Those are C1 zonings. You cannot have a youth-oriented facility in a C1 zoning or in a C2 zoning and that entire strip is C2 zoning. So we're not saying, oh, you need to move because you're not in the right or you need to get a variance because we want their businesses there. We're not going to affect their business just as they're not going to affect ours. They're not even going to know they're there. But I just wanted to put a little bit of clarity out there that we can't just pick up and move. There's, there's so many moving parts of the puzzle that has to meet for all the, all the setbacks, school bus stops, churches. And we really did the best that we could with what we had to work with. So I just really wanted to put that out there so you guys understood the whole kind of picture. And if you look at the map, you'll see that we bubbled every single thing. We meet the school bus stop, we meet the setback for the churches, we're in the right zoning. Every single person has given us their blessing, except for Timber. And we understand she doesn't like cannabis. That's okay, she can not like, not like cannabis. We're not asking her to like cannabis, but she can't come up here and throw anything that she can. Oh, there's a bus stop, oh, I'm a youth-oriented facility, oh, I'm a teacher, just to try and sway you in a way. And to the fact that she tried to allude that we were trying to bribe with offering 2%, it's kind of appalling. I mean, we just want our community to thrive and we have growers that they are not going to make it. This two months that we just got setback, it is harvest season. They're selling their pounds for $250. We can get them three to four times the amount. That's all going to get flexed back into this community. So we really hope that you guys take the time and really think about this because this is really going to shape our cannabis program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still have no raised hands and no new chats.
Yes.
Hello, everyone, Brooke Millerick from Weaverville. I am glad I caught this just now. I have become aware that our library assistant inside of Weaverville is not retiring as of this last Friday and that she will be here till almost mid-December. That being said, with two full-time staff in the Weaverville library, it does not make sense to me.
Are you doing general public comment or about the cannabis distribution?
I'm general, I'm so sorry.
We're already.
I apologize.
Sorry. We can talk afterwards. Still nothing. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. Are back, okay. Thank you all. We're back. And we have wrapped up public comment on this matter. We are now at a point where if the board had any other questions, we can get those answered. Um, but beyond that, then we need to move into a motion to support us having discussion. So any questions? Or any of the official parties involved? Appellant applicant.
Do I have a question for, I guess, the, excuse me, for the, for Timber? You said earlier that you have some pictures in a folder somewhere. You have a a monster truck on the floor and that designates you as being a child-friendly, youth-oriented facility. I kind of think that's a stretch. You know, I own a store that's not a youth. The question is, do you find having those things on your premises would make your business a youth-oriented facility?
Sir, meaning no disrespect, if you take 1% of what I said, it could mischaracterize the entire case. Everything that's on my walls is for kids. Everything that I use to teach is for kids. Even the bars, the type of floors, the stickers for placement on the stores, it is 100 on the floors. It's 100% for kids so that I can teach kids. If you take kids into any other facility that doesn't have these things, they're very, very standoffish sometimes or they aren't focused. These are all things that allow me to speak the language to each individual so that I can help him or her. When I was talking about monster trucks on the floor, et cetera, Lincoln Logs, I was giving you a picture. Um, because it seems like people don't want to come in. So I was trying to show you what you would see when you first walk in and then through it. And now I hear this ridiculous, we're sharing a a bathroom thing with next. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's, you know, again, no disrespect. It it's just dumb. It's dumb that nobody will come in and see for themselves. And so I was trying to to show you what it really is when you walk in. It's a classroom. It's not a college classroom. It's an elementary school classroom. And that's how it's set up from start to finish. My chairs are for littles. I have tables for small children there. Um, we do a lot of different types of classes for kids. What I don't have is a whole bunch of adult chairs, a whole bunch of adult-sized bars. Um, I don't have, you know, these things. I don't have disco balls and whatever else that they would use in adult-oriented facilities. This is clearly kids.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you just because we just need to have right at this point, just a specific question, specific answer.
Okay.
But thank you for that. Anybody else? I I guess while you're there, I'll just ask the question. You you alluded to the reference to having a shared bathroom. Are you saying that is not the case?
It's ridiculous, absolutely not.
Okay. Um, and county council, uh, thank you. Uh, if you could, I think both for the appellate, the applicant, but for those that are also here just observing. Uh, help help explain this quasi-judicial role and our requirement to only operate on what's brought before us and not to go out and research on our own.
So this is an administrative essentially proceeding. And so you have what is really an administrative record. You have what went before the planning commission and what they considered, what staff has presented and what the appellate and other parties have presented. So um, including public comment, you have all of that um available to you. Um, it is not wise and recommended or really it's improper to go do your own investigation outside of the confines of this record. Because people can't really speak to what you didn't and didn't do. It has to be what's before you here today. So that's your role.
So I I know it's confusing to people and I think oftentimes they feel like that translates into or isn't as perceived as a lack of interest, a lack of willingness to invest in really understanding the situation. Trust me, it's very frustrating on this side too. Um, but that's our role. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions for official parties in this role, in this process? Okay, I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to uphold the planning commission's decision.
Do we have a second?
I will second for discussion purposes.
Okay. And before we jump into discussion, anybody want to uh offer another motion?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to put a competing motion on the table if I could, please. I'm going to move to uphold the appeal and deny the distribution license with a finding that Trinity Dance and Fitness is a youth-oriented facility located less than 200 feet from the proposed project site. And as such, would be in violation of both county code and state law to approve the project.
And I will second that.
Hey, we have two competing motions and now we can have the discussion. So who would like to start?
I guess I will start. Um, this has been a an interesting issue for me personally. I know I've received a call somewhere in the neighborhood of September 13th from a a concerned citizen that said, you have to watch the planning commission meeting. The PC went way off the rails. Go to 133 in the video and one hour and 33 minutes and watch this. And I did. And I can say I was very, uh, I don't, well, we'll use the word disappointed with what occurred at that planning commission meeting. I was actually happy to see that Commissioner uh Heaton wasn't present. I would s- I would say if he had been there uh and would have went along with exactly what happened at that meeting, I would have asked for his resignation. Uh, the planning commission was tasked with one simple, and it might not be some easy to do, but it is a simple task to determine whether or not this is a youth-oriented facility. Um, what they veered off into was a proposal basically to amend our ordinance and change state code because they don't believe that it would affect the youth facility if that cannabis operation was there. That's a different discussion. While I might agree that nobody's going to notice if you put a distro in that building. Um, I don't care if we don't notice. It's a violation of local and state code to do so if we determine that that's a a youth-oriented facility. And the planning commission just sidestepped that. And in doing that, not only do they put it drag it out more to, okay, now we have multiple public meetings to hash this out. But also you have county staff time that's involved at enormous rate. You have someone in our community that gets to pay $500 for an appeal fee because our planning commission failed to do their job. And um, I was extremely disappointed, we'll say, to say the least. Since then, I've watched the planning commission meeting um multiple other times. And I I haven't got any less disappointed. Um, I think it was, it was really not. It wasn't right. And and I can take from uh comments today. I I believe the applicant um that they weren't offering a bribe when they said 2% uh tax on their on their income, but at the same time, that's what in government, if there's a quid pro quo, you have a problem. And when they say, if you pass this, we'll give you 2% taxes. Um, whether they intended it to be or not, that is a bribe. When we have planning commissioners that at that time were excited by the idea that this money was going to come in. I did a commissioner or supervisor Lutwiler quickly brain math. Uh, we're talking about saying, okay, even though we have a youth-oriented facility here, we have a dance studio. We're up talking about $18,000 a year in tax revenue at 2%. That we're going to say that's more important than the dance studio that's been established for six years. I I'm sorry, but I was, I was appalled by watching that planning commission meeting. Um, and the more times I watch it, the more appalled I get.
I would just ask, um, because I guess this falls into that category of some, that is some level of research that you kind of did outside that some of us may have not, I have not. Um, so is there anything else that you feel like you want to share that uh you feel is influencing the decision we're making today? Because I guess that's what we're supposed to all have had that same information. So if you, if there's something that you took from that, that you feel is going to influence your decision today?
From the the planning commission meeting? I, the only thing I took from the planning commission meeting was the fact that the planning commission said, we don't have enough information to make a decision based whether or not the youth-oriented facility, so we're going to make a recommendation that the project move forward. When their task was to make a recommendation of whether or not it was a youth-oriented facility. And so that's my takeaway on that. Um, there, some of the same information was presented, the same definitions were presented. Director Plabami, Plabani made the same um spiel about ambiguity, um, which we've actually had that conversation outside of the confines of this room also, where he explained ambiguity. But other than that, um, and I did ask counsel at our last meeting and she said, yes, that that YouTube video was part of the public record that we could address to look at this.
I'm saying it was wrong. I just, just acknowledge him and.
That's all part of the record.
Yeah, okay.
Speaking for my planning commissioner, he did not think this is a bribe in any way, shape or form. I think he was probably speaking for the others too. This wasn't taken as a bribe. And I think we have the definition of a youth-oriented facility borne out in our staff report that we have today and it's, I think it's clearly defined. That is not a youth-oriented facility as established by the words youth and toward Phil Sittily. It's just not. And Drew got together and I want to thank Drew, Ed, Bella, Mitchell, everybody for putting together that extensive 90-day package, as as Rick said, that we, you know, thoroughly poured over. I knew this would be a big issue today. And I appreciate the work that you guys do and I pack the work that you do and the effort that you put into it. I disagree with Supervisor Frazier, you know, in his sentiments that uh he thinks that the board was bribed or anything. I just, you know, that's his personal take and I understand that. That's not the take of my board, my commissioner on the board at all. Um, so of the three that said, yes, I know that one of them definitely didn't have any sentiments of being bribed. And I could go into a few more things, if you'd like, about some of the comments that were made now.
Well, um, I, since we're having discussion and you said in this definition, um, you that this is not a youth-oriented facility. This is the discussion we should be having.
Thank you.
What do you say makes that not a youth-oriented facility from this definition? And then let's, let's have that discussion.
All right, so. Let me just sort of then and then answer. So I I did want to bring us back to that because we can have whatever our feelings are about the planning commission, where they did their role. But I think it's very valid for us to understand what our role is. So we have an appeal before us. The the foundation of that appeal has to be not what do we think about whether this would be a good or bad thing for the community or that area or anything else. It is, does it qualify, does the appellant's business qualify as a youth-oriented facility? Because if it does, like it or not, we can't prove this.
Correct.
Feel like it does not, then we can, you know, uphold the planning commission. But that is exactly why this is here. Uh, it is unfortunate that the planning commission didn't reach that. That was their job and they didn't, but now it's our job. And is there anything else you'd like to clarify so that we keep ourselves focused on the outcome?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, going to Supervisor Frazier's comment about discussing and asking why or why not this is a youth-oriented facility. Um, discussing the actual facts and making those. and making those, backing your opinions or your own findings as to why it's a youth oriented facility is important for the record.
So Drew, could you step forward if you could?
I would. I was asking why Supervisor Gogan says that this is not a youth oriented facility.
From the facts that were presented for me from the planning commission and the cannabis business department. I don't think you or I know that it is or isn't. So I want, you certainly don't go by there and kept no rules on that, nor have I. So I mean.
And we, we have.
Second, Dan, I'm talking, okay? So what I lean on here is professionalism of our departments here, our cannabis department, our planning division to make the right decisions. I can see in the staff report that they've gone back and looked over this thoroughly, even discussed the, the word ambiguity in here, which is an odd thing for me.
And that's why we're here is.
Hang on, Dan, I'm talking.
Well, I'm, I'm going to answer this. Drew said that this is ambiguous and he couldn't answer it. Okay.
So, so from now on, as always, you don't speak unless you raise your hand, acknowledge to me, get the chair's approval. We're not talking to each other. We're not talking to the staff. We're talking through the chair and that's how we maintain decorum and move forward. So let's keep focused.
Thank you.
So what is it that you would like?
I was talking and he wasn't, he interrupted me.
Well, you have asked for staff when we're having board discussions. So.
I wanted to just get clarity on what a youth oriented facility is.
Yeah.
I got it.
Thank you.
I just wanted you to be able to see it so you can.
No, I've read all that last night. I read it all. It would, it would be my opinion that the definition of youth oriented facility does not, this place does not meet the criteria of that as per our cannabis department in our planning division.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to have clarity on, if we're going to say that this is not a youth oriented facility to me, I'm going back to planning commission brain here, we have to have findings that will back that up. So.
Actual findings.
Yes. And so we need a finding of fact that says, okay, because Trinity Dance and Fitness is, fill in the blank, it is not a youth oriented facility. And my take on it is by looking at what's been presented to us. Because of the fact that when 90% of the people in the country think of a dance ballet studio, they think of child first off, but then plus we have, we have enrollment, we have the pictures that were sent to us from the website, the advertisement, I mean, the, the definition that's in ours says identifies the establishment, advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors. So their advertisement was not catering to adults. Their advertisement was catered to youth of school age. If it says or, the, the big or in our, our definition, the individuals who regularly patronize, congregate or assemble at the establishment are predominantly minors. So to me, in order for us to say that this is not a youth oriented facility, we would need a finding of fact that it's not predominantly minors. I can look at what we have before us and say, I can have a finding that says the people who congregate at this establishment are predominantly minors.
Mr. Chair. And Dan is.
Yes.
In the, the Reading School of Arts and the homeschool approved vendor listing, the establishment of Trinity Dance and Fitness is recognized as a vendor for the homeschool approved vendor list. So that means, in my understanding, that the students who are participating in these programs, if they are in a homeschool scenario, are able to receive credits and recognition that courses or, you know, grades are given based off of their participation in this because that's how homeschools do things. So I think that, in my opinion, the recognition of the facility as a vendor for homeschool approved vending list says to me that it is also, it's a, it's a schooling facility. And that's just one piece of the information that I feel, you know, identifies it. I'm not, I, as everyone else, I've, I have no problem with having it. The other business in, in possibly a different location, as Supervisor Fraser mentioned, it, it just doesn't fit within our current capacity to accept it in this location if in fact, we determine that this place is a, a youth facility distributor of, of, you know, classes and so forth.
And, and so while you have the, the floor, is there, are, are you coming down on the side of that it does meet, right? And, and that's why you're referring to the homeschooling and that that indicates that it is a youth oriented facility? I'm just trying to make sure because as we've been instructed and Dan, Supervisor Fraser has been emphasizing, we need to be very clear about whichever way we're coming down, why?
Based, based on this document and the provision of the amount of, of students that visit this location being under the ages of 18 and this school being recognized as a homeschool vendor and this, and the location is where it is housed, to me, that by definition says that it's a, that it's a, it's a, a facility for children.
And refer to the, explain.
Reading School of Arts homeschooling approved vendor listing and Trinity Dance and Fitness is, is, is recognized as a vendor for that potential program apparently. So.
And then you, were you also referencing the document that talked about the enrollment? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the Trinity Dance and Karate 2024 Fall attendance sheet. I mean, I, I have no way of verifying this obviously, but it was presented. And the ages are all under the, the oldest student based off of this document that was provided to us is 15 years old. So if that's the question that we have to answer, then I need, I would need other information that says that it's not.
Chair, may I?
Please.
I would add to the list of findings that the appellant has brought forward, that over the semesters of instruction, the percentages have proportioned out as 90% youth to 10% adults.
So when the staff reviewed the Trinity Dance and Fitness studio, it lists 28 classes, 17 of which are identified for all ages. Further investigation revealed that the fall 2024 calendar, which we're in now, lists seven classes for kids and six classes, no, excuse me, five classes for kids and six classes as adults.
Adult slash teen.
Slash teens. So I would think that having that as at least 50% more for adults would qualify.
Slash teen, teens are also minors.
I think.
Well, I just want to make sure Supervisor Gogan, so I think whatever, whatever criteria, including what you just shared, is there anything else that you want to share that is supporting your position that it is not a youth oriented facility? I know you've referred to staff and so forth, but is there any specific, like a finding thing that we're going to, because we can't just say, well, staff said, that's not, we have to trust in them a lot, but that we have to have our own findings here at this point.
You have, do you have your own findings on this?
I will. I'm, I'm just.
I think that I would rely on staff's findings on this since they probably would do a better job than any of us, of us here. And that is what we mostly depend on is the staff, Drew, Ed's findings. And I would back their findings.
And the only thing I would just clarify there is what I heard Drew say was, they did not make an official determination, which is why it went to the planning commission. Is that, am I fairly representing that? I know you initially thought it wasn't because that's why you processed it in the first place. But it sounded like when it really came down to it, you were not taking that stand. And I just, if we're relying on that, I want to make sure we understand.
I'd, I'd like to clarify two things. One is that the description that this qualifies as a homeschool opportunity, homeschooling actually falls under the definition of schools. And I don't think really provides any significant bearing to the discussion that you all are having in terms of whether or not this should be qualified as a youth oriented facility, as homeschools are exempt from the definition of schools. What I would like to point out, and the reason that I ultimately landed on staff, it not seeming appropriate for staff to make a determination in this regard, is that ideally definitions would be constructed in a way that allow for the objective assessment of those criteria and allow for a clear determination as to whether or not something qualifies under a specific definition. However, unfortunately for all of us, I find that that definition leads to requiring a subjective assessment and puts staff in a position where normally for any other definition, there's no research that really has to be done. Is it a school? Yes, it's a school. Is it a park? Yes, it's a park. But the way that this definition is constructed, to me, leads to ambiguity, which is why I requested that the planning commission and now you all make a determination in that regard.
Thank you for that. I appreciate your clarification.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that clarification on the homeschool piece.
Supervisor Fraser.
I'm, I'm going to step back in there. I, I appreciate very much what Drew is doing. I don't, I think that there is still validity to Supervisor Carpenter Harris's point that being a homeschool vendor shows that it could be a youth center because generally we don't homeschool adults. The, the ambiguity part of that, I, I really understand also where Drew's coming from with staff wants shells and black and white. But you can't define everything in code. And we know that. And that's why we have these, that's why I'm so frustrated with the planning commission's lack of taking on the question because that was their job. And I think that there are words we can look at in here that show at least a way that we can make that determination where I, I 100% agree with Drew not taking that on as a staff person because it could be, cause a conflict. But the definition is fairly clear for we just have to look at the, to me, the ambiguity is in the words that, now I lost my definition. I need a bigger screen. Predominantly. And where it says they are predominantly minors, that's, we have to determine what is predominantly, which if you look that up, it would be like 50% plus one. And then an establishment catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors. So it's hard to, for staff to determine, is it primarily for minors or is it? But I think that we should be able to answer that question. And with the information that's been presented to us, I would say, yes, it's primarily intended for minors and it's predominantly patronized by minors. And ergo, it is a youth oriented facility based on our own definition.
Supervisor Cox?
I can add a little bit of clarity to the vendor portion of this because I have been a vendor. And I have had homeschool students that I put into other vendors' programs. And what happens with that is that the school under which, the school underneath which you school your children will pay for those classes as long as you take those classes from somebody who is on that approved vendor list. And so children who are enrolled at Reading School of the Arts could, their parents could send them to Ms. Beck's dance studio, their lessons, the school, Reading School of the Arts would pay their tuition fee and they can take their lessons there. However, just because she is a vendor for that school doesn't mean that there couldn't be a vendor that predominantly teaches adults that is also an approved vendor that you could go to. And so what it will do is it'll add to, if there are students that are, and people can take that opportunity or not take the opportunity. So just because she's there as a, as a vendor doesn't mean that there are numbers, but there could be. And, but because it's there, what it does is it adds to her stats. So if she can say, I have, you know, it's just another opportunity to pull a wider range of the public into your program and allows you to increase your business. So what I see, what I see going on here is the word, and I, and I just want to pause for one second, Chair, you can stop me if you want to. It's really uncomfortable to sit here, enormously uncomfortable because, and I'm just going to throw this in, stop me if you need to.
No, go ahead. I have a sigh in agreement.
Thank you. I, I understand, I have learned and listened to the applicants and to understand what this business does, the need for it in the community and what they offer, the diligence to work hard at what they do. And I fully and 100% agree that they would be ideal model folks to run such a business. But I just want to state for the record, this is the final administrative remedy that is before the appellant in this county. After this attempt at a remedy, the opportunity to take this to a higher body of judgment is, is open. And so for us to go through and find these findings and make our decision based on the facts before us is the only thing we have available to us. It is our job right now. In this quasi judicial role, we literally have to take off the hat of, oh, but I really want economic development. Oh, but I really don't see a problem. Oh, but I don't understand the controversy or the, the inconsistency in, I'll rent to a smoke shop, but I won't be within this distance of something I can't even see. We don't get to make moral judgments like that. We don't have that margin. We just don't have it. It's all about the data. It's all about the facts. End of my insertion. And the data that I see before me, and so what I want to say is, it, things can look like something. You can look at a website one day and it was pointed out, hey, it looked to me like it looked at it this day and it looked this way. And I'll look two weeks later and it looks this way. But did the reality change because the website changed? The reality was the reality. I can wear my suit today and my swimsuit tomorrow, but I'm me. I'm me. It doesn't change. And so the data that has come here, the only thing that I see are percentages, 90% children to 10% adults. I see the list of classes here. What I wish would have happened is that way back at the discovery stage before hopes were raised and people had to go into, you know, paying money and having all of these hearings. Could we just have asked, what is the reality? Could I see your data? Could I see how many students you've had per semester since you opened? So I could know who the clientele is because that then would apply to the definition. So I could know who the clientele is because that then would apply to the definition. If, if somebody has data to the contrary, I'm willing to listen and look at that data. But based on the information I see, I don't see it. There is a question about the zoning. So how did a youth oriented facility land inside of C2 zoning? I can't answer that. Maybe we need some instruction on how the law applies to, okay, but it did land there and it's been there for six years. How then does that affect us?
It's there. So that's not really, but for you, in other words, you're not trying to, not trying to.
Rezone that business. They're there. That might be a question for the planning department to answer. But right now you're just here on the appeal.
And that's what I wanted to get clarity about is, because we have heard that about, you know, this is one of very limited number of C2 parcels that, from which the distribution center is allowed, that at least as projected, I don't, we haven't asked staff, C2 is not supportive of the child, youth oriented facility, that the smoke shops, there are all these other kinds of factors that you could factor in. I'm looking for you to clarify, and I think what I've been hearing from you is, but that's not why you're here to decide. The, the, the fact that it's, there may be something there that shouldn't be in that zone, doesn't matter. The fact that there may be something next to it that is worse off than, worse for youth than a distribution center. They can't enter, doesn't matter. What matters is, do you believe that the ordinance as described of a youth oriented facility applies here?
Do I, yes, it does apply.
And that's the only thing that applies here.
Yes, I, I think one of the questions that you are kind of in a roundabout way asking is, was there a finding previously that that was a youth oriented facility? And if it was, then how did it end up in C2? Obvious, or the lack of a finding that it's the youth oriented facility back when it was put in there. Those are questions we don't have any answers to as we sit here.
If we did have the answer to it, would it affect the decision, the outcome today? It's irrelevant. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, at, at this juncture, it is.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Any other?
I have a question, but I don't, am I allowed to ask it of the?
If it will help inform your discussion, yes.
I, I believe your name is Timber. I have a question for you. In any, in any of your, you mentioned that, you know, your credentials. Do you, in any of your licenses or what is necessary for you to run your facility? Have to say that you're going to have minors within your, like you're the only adult maybe in the room. Do you, do you have to have anything that, that would identify you as a person who can offer this youth, this, this, these activities that are for youth and youth alone? I mean, I'm just trying to, we don't have a business license that describes what somebody maybe is going into business for. So I'm just curious to know that when you have offering, when you're offering classes, whether they be for homeschool or you're offering classes, whether it's for dance, do you have to have anything that qualifies you as being someone who can do this with children under the ages of 18?
Yes, actually, specifically in terms that probably are known for teaching kids zumba classes, you have to be licensed specifically for those things. I was also tested to teach through Dance Masters for teaching kids tap. So there, there are a lot of things that come into this pile of, yeah, really for kids. But also on our insurance statement, they require, there, there's a huge addition to our policy that requires statements and a handbook acknowledging that we will not be alone in the room with a child, et cetera. So there are a lot of different things that, a lot of different hoops that I have to jump through for my governing bodies. Also through the American Council on Education, I'm sorry, American Council on, on Exercise ACE, which is one of the premier licensing agents, I'm a youth fitness specialist. And that is another one of those requirements that allowed us to become a vendor, not just through Reading and School of the Arts. I have others. I wanted to give you an example. But you have to prove that you are actually in fact an expert. I'm not, I, I didn't, I didn't study karate on the internet. You know, I actually had to put in the work to become a black belt. I had to put in a lot of work, 28 years of studying chikiti to, to be a ballet teacher. So there was a lot that went into being able to teach children.
So as part of your ability to offer youth specific classes, you have to be in possession of this type of insurance and of these types of certifications and, and are you in possession of all of those things?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay, so I usually try to hold till what I think is close to the end before weighing in too much. So I want to make sure everybody feels heard.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks. As, as I guess Supervisor Cox alluded to, it's, it's not just uncomfortable. To me, this is, this is frustrating because from the moment that I read about this, I thought frankly, that it's, doesn't make any sense that we're even having this discussion because I don't understand why we would have an ordinance that says it's okay for a youth oriented facility to be closer to a smoke shop and a bar than it is to a building that nobody can go into unless you're there to do business through a secure door, completely protected. You know, I've heard the comments about, well, dance is usually for kids and, you know, if it's, if it's dance, it's for kids. I have several young adult friends who teach different kinds of dance exercise classes. And every video I ever see from them is all young adults. So it doesn't mean because you do dance or karate or exercise or anything else that it's for kids. So we have to look, to me, we have to look at, well, what do we see about, as has been alluded, what is the advertising for? What are the classes for? What does the attendance record show? What are the certifications? And, and even as Supervisor Cox said, you can be certified to do something for kids. It does, you, you, I'm sure you teach kids and adults as a piano teacher. So yeah, I'm qualified to do this for kids and I may have to do, but it doesn't mean I don't do the other. So I really think it just comes down to us because our ordinance says what it says, that we have to decide based on the evidence before us, does the dance facility, dance, exercise, karate facility qualify as a youth oriented facility? And if it does, then we have to uphold the appeal. And, and, and again, I, what I much rather is that county council was saying, well, no, but you have discretion. You can do this and you can change the rules and you can do all this other sort of stuff. Because frankly, I think the right outcome is that it gets approved, the county starts to benefit it. And I think that area will improve because of it. But my problem is, I don't see the way there with what I'm reading and what I'm hearing. And that's frustrating. So Supervisor Fraser, go ahead.
On top of that, that's one of the things that I found so frustrating with some of the discussion that's happened on this is, even though if you don't agree with the fact that our ordinance calls for 1,000 foot setbacks, it still doesn't get us beyond the fact that the state law requires a 600 foot setback. So if.
Though they're referred to a youth center, which has a little bit of a different description. Sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah, it, I still, I would say I've, I've read both of them. And to find findings of fact that would say it's not a youth center, I couldn't do either. I could find, find, I could make a finding of fact that it is a youth center under state code, but I can't do the other. So that's the issue to me is the fact that I have seen nothing that says it's not a youth center or it's not a youth oriented facility. And as such, there is no way that we can proceed with licensing.
Is there any possibility that if we, it's maybe way out of bounds. If we can't find another facility for the distribution to go into, can there be another facility for the dance studio to go into? I'm just tossing it out.
I don't think there's any way we could, we could do that. There's.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor.
It's, I said it before, it's, it's extremely simple, what we're tasked with. It's not easy. But I think all we have to do is answer that question. And then we have to have the findings to back it up. And we have to be able to live with ourself when we're done. And so we have to, our task is to determine whether or not it's a youth oriented facility first and foremost.
Do you know, of interest to me as well is that I, I watched the planning commission meeting, I can't tell you how many times. I grabbed the transcript and read it as they spoke. And the person who made the motion followed their discussion of the motion with the words, it doesn't meet the ordinance, but it meets the spirit of what we're trying to do, which is protect our kids and at the same time promote economic development. And I think that we all agree with the spirit of what we want. But the bottom line is, it doesn't meet the ordinance. If, if the, unless there's more findings than what we see.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing too, what I, what I sense is we, we have a fair amount of data that supports that it is a youth oriented facility, the attendance, the classes, the so forth. We don't have something that, that documents that it isn't. You know, we don't see something that says, oh, but we have records or we have visuals of more adults going in than, and, and actually taking classes because your adults could be dropping the kids off, picking them up, but, but actually participating in. Or are we, and I know there was reference to, it used to refer, the website apparently used to refer to the only place for kids up to 84 or whatever. But that doesn't mean it was then not predominantly for kids. And again, my frustration comes back to, I haven't been in the dance hall. I don't have kids anymore. They're all grown up. But I have been into the, the retail cannabis operation several times. I went in with a couple of days after they opened to check on it, to see how it was because we had so many debates and deliberations about this and I wanted to learn more. And I visited a couple of other times to check. And I think it's a extremely well-run, very professional. And we've had the discussions that I knew were in the minds of the owners leading up to this about how big of an impact the distribution center would have. Through the California jobs first, we have an application to get a distribution center in Trinity County, get some funding to help make it happen because it's, could have that big of a financial impact as described. So when I think of how many kids walk past Cali Love as they go into the grocery store and they go into a Subway and they go over to CVS from the grocery store and somehow none have been transported out of their minds. You know, there's nothing going on there and that is where you go in and publicly purchase the product that people seem to be so concerned about. So the fact that it's being processed behind the door with security, with all these things. Again, I think we have the wrong ordinance. And I think it is got to be extremely frustrating to everyone involved that we are leaving ourselves with a strong, solid business owner who is trying to help the industry and the community and our ordinances as we're interpreting them. It sounds like, at least at the, the macro level is, just doesn't support where it's currently being applied. My understanding is there could be, I think it was mentioned, it could be, come back and ask for a variance. That could be an approach that could be done, but not, not here, not now. But that if this, if we determine that this appeal is being upheld, then if they still wanted to try that location, they could try to. We could look at an ordinance change. They could try a variance. They could all, there's other approaches. But those aren't before us.
If that were the case, are we able to grant a variance that's within the state setback? We can't be more.
We can't be more lenient than the state.
At least as restrictive.
And I, I've.
Even work, even if we change our ordinance.
I would be really, I would really think that we would be putting ourselves way out there on a limb to grant a variance for that because that would be like granting a use variance, which you can't legally do. You can only grant a variance because they don't, their lot restricts them to a point. They can't make setback requirements. So that, that would not work. I would not want to be county council if we granted that variance.
Well, that's why we pay our the big bucks. Okay. Did you have something else you wanted to advise? No? Okay. Other comments before we start to take votes?
I'm sorry, one addition. Is there any modifications you wanted to make to any of the motions to include specific findings to support the motion?
So we have two, a motion to uphold the planning commission decision and then a motion to uphold the appeal with a finding that the appellant's business does qualify as a youth oriented facility. And you're saying with either of those, do you want to go further?
So the, the first motion on the table is the last motion made. So that would be to uphold the appeal. And I'm asking if there's any statements you want to make as far as supporting that motion.
I, I do want to add statements to it. That was my motion. And I want to ask a question first. And because my business is similar, except that I don't run a storefront. And for me, if tomorrow 15 adults knocked on my door and said, I want to enroll in your piano studio, I would say yes, I would take them. And then I would have a different split that would, if my situation were before us, the numbers would not support calling what I do a youth oriented activity. If you had multiple adults show up tomorrow, would you entertain them for the sake of business? And, and then this, and then the numbers would change? Or is, or, I'll just let you answer that. I don't know what that looks like for you.
I appreciate that question. Our classes wouldn't allow for it. We cap at nine. Sometimes they'll squeak a tent student in there. But our classes simply don't allow for it. The open basic ballet is currently the only one that has adults in it. And again, they would, they would cap at nine and even with nine adults in there, it wouldn't affect the percentage. So.
But is there something that would say, I can't handle that many adults because what I do, I do for children and I can allow this many adults in, but here's my, my margin that I won't cross?
Well, because of the hours that were open and I have another job, I can't add any more classes. The classes are what the classes are for this year. For in the springtime, even then, you know, there's, there's no more adult classes. And, and quite frankly, there are no adults asking to come in. So we had one independent contractor who taught zumba and she had two adults that came. And, you know, she offered it for a year. So the market for adults in my sector is just not there for that supposition.
Okay, understood. And I'm also looking at intent. The market isn't there. The classes on those days doesn't work. But can you support intent?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I teach kids. I teach kids. When I am most comfortable and what I do and what I did my business for is kids. The times that I've attempted to say, hey, you know what? You can come on with your granddaughter, come on with your grandson. I think that's wonderful if we get somebody. I'm, it's, it's uncomfortable to say this publicly, but I'm uncomfortable teaching adults. I will take the class with my adults. I teach kids. That's my clientele. That's who I started it for. That's why I started it. And originally it was, you know, for my daughter. And so, you know, kids are, are what I'm there for. I welcome adults to come into the very few classes where they're going to be allowed. But it's not a reality in our community and it wouldn't be something that, my training, my, my training is concentrated for helping children to express and control themselves. My training is not concentrated for helping, you know, people in, in adult demographics to do other things. I, it's sort of a residual. But it's, it's not what I do. So can somebody take a, a Shasta College Extension course on a high school? Sure. Does that change the nature of the high school? No way. That's the same situation.
Okay, thank you. So additional statements of findings that you would like to include with your motion before we call the vote? Supervisor Gogan, findings to support the first motion as well? Either one?
So I've rather been relying on your little fingers over there gathering all of this information down. But I know that the one I added to your list was that the clientele over the semesters since the studio has opened, is that correct, since it has been open, has averaged as ninety percent youth to ten percent adults over all semesters?
And, um, I would, I, I lost my definition again. I would say, um, one of the findings of fact, and that's based on the, the schedules and advertisement that we were sent in our packet shows that the advertisement from Trinity Dance and Fitness is targeting minors. And that was part of the definition also.
Anything else you'd like to add there is basically, we're looking for the things that are causing you to say, yeah, it is a youth oriented facility. We've heard a number of things, I just want to know what you want in your motion. While you think about that, Supervisor Gogan, is there anything you'd like to?
Sure, I do not have anything to say, thank you.
Okay. And was it, who, who seconded your motion?
And I would amend my motion. If she amends her motion, I'll amend my second to include those findings.
I do.
So I have motion made to uphold the appeal with the following findings, the appellant's business does qualify as a youth oriented facility. Clientele since opening has been ninety percent or more, wrote adults, uh, children. Uh, advertising primarily targets minors. This is the second motion amended to reflect the findings, because that's what we really need to have foundationally there.
So not changing my motion, but I'm gonna have another stream of conscience that's come out. And I know that it's, this is data that we're looking for. The individuals who regularly patronize, congregate or assemble at the stadium are predominantly minors. Okay, there's the data and it's in the motion. I'm struggling with the fact that it's okay for children to walk into your dance class through the incense of nicotine. But it's not okay for them walk into your dance class past a building that is just a building. But that's not data, that's moral observation, it's inconsistency that doesn't set well.
And, um, I would venture that if we task Trinity County Planning Commission with regulating tobacco in Trinity County at this day and age, that we would come up with a lot different tobacco regulation than we have at this point in California. And since we were, cannabis is, is more highly regulated than alcohol and tobacco. But it's because it became regulated at the point that we have a lot of people working very hard to increase regulation on alcohol and tobacco. We've seen it at these board meetings where people come and have proposals to ban smoking in public areas in Trinity County. They were there when we wrote the ordinance, when it came to cannabis, and they got what they wanted. Tobacco was here before we had laws. So, um, it's an existing use that we have to chip away at where it's in undesirable locations. And that's where, um, if you, that was one of the arguments that we heard when we were doing the cannabis ordinance was, let's not create the conflicts and then try to change them later. That's why we have enormous setbacks from some of these areas, because we didn't want to have that situation where we had cannabis facilities right next to a youth center, we, we're trying to avoid that. We can't do that with tobacco because we don't have the, we don't have the ordinance to do so. So that's my answer to that.
Okay. All right, um, I was just making some notes and share with Supervisor Cox, so again, you may be asked to amend your second as well. So what I have now, uh, from Supervisor Gogan, we have the motion made to uphold the planning commission decision. We have no additional findings to put with that. The second motion, which will be the first that we vote upon, is a motion made to uphold the appeal with the following findings, the appellant's business does qualify as a youth oriented facility. Clientele since opening has been ninety percent or more children. Advertising primarily targets minors, furniture and decor is focused primarily on youth, classes are primarily focused on youth.
Agreed.
I'm gonna say out loud that I resent being put in this position. Wish that at the, that's why I wanted to know what the date of the application was. I wish that there was more diligence into finding out what was beneath the suit. What are the numbers so that hopes wouldn't be raised or what have you? I'm just saying what I wish.
I guess along that lines, I'll, I'll just say, based on my assumption of how this vote's gonna go, I think this is a legal thing that we have to do and a bad outcome for the county. So, uh, call the vote.
Supervisor Frazier? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
No.
Chairman Littweiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have one more item, we're gonna continue through. Human Resources acknowledged the cost of providing two years additional service credit, called a golden handshake to eligible employees of the sheriff's office, probation department, library, general services and behavioral health and eligible employees in the public health branch director classification. No fiscal impact.
Thank you Chair, uh, I'm gonna introduce this item and try to address questions. What I'm passing out before you and there's one here for the public record as well, is an amended, uh, one of the attachments in this item. So this is the golden handshake item, uh, this is a, a two-part process. In essence, uh, we have to bring forth, uh, to a public forum, to this board, the anticipated or the potential cost of the golden handshake and who the program would potentially be offered to eligible employees. In the board report, uh, there is a document that shows a one point three million dollar effort. The item in front of you shows a one point four million dollar. The difference is, uh, there's, there was three positions that CalPERS came back to us late on Friday and said, oh, we had them misc, misc, miscategorized. And they should have been safety versus miscellaneous. And then that also changed their actual retirement. So those three positions were Assistant Chief Probation Officer, Deputy Probation Officer Three and, uh, Correctional Deputy Dispatcher Two. Uh, so in the, in the item before you, those three categories will show safety and their retirement is three percent at fifty for the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, Deputy Probation Officer Three. And then it's two point seven percent at fifty-seven for the dispatcher two. That, based upon the formulas and the cost factors, uh, that adjusts the overall, uh, potential economic impact, or, uh, budgetary impact to one point four million versus one point three million. So based upon that is what's, what's before you is the overall potential of the amount of retirement benefits we're gonna have to pay if one hundred percent of the individuals, uh, took the golden handshake. We know that is not gonna happen, uh, but we don't know exactly how many will happen. So we gotta present the absolute worst case scenario. This is not a one point four million dollar bill that the county is gonna see next year or see in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This is basically just changing the time period when the county would see retirement benefits needing to be paid, uh, to these potential employees that would take the golden handshake, which is a two years of service credit. We would essentially be paying their retirement benefits earlier than if they'd retired on their normal track. So it, it's not adding any budgetary bill to us, it's just shifting it a little bit, potentially. And then the offset to that is, uh, when these individuals retire, some of these positions are not gonna be backfilled. And then some of these positions will be backfilled, but they will be backfilled at, the anticipation is, they will be backfilled at a lower salary rate. Same salary classification, but more than likely at a different step. Some of these individuals are at a very senior in their career, therefore at a very high step. And then if we were to go to backfill them, more than likely, uh, they would be brought in at an A or possibly a B step, which could save us in the realm of, uh, potentially up to twenty percent. So with that, I will stop and open it up for any questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there a way to quantify outcome to the county in terms of quality of service when we have folks that are more senior, they are more experienced and what they bring to their role? Perhaps their work is more productive than what someone newer to their industry might be?
That is a, a possibility. And in some cases that's probably true and maybe other cases that's not true. So I, it's, it's very difficult, virtually impossible to quantify that. But that could be a true statement. I don't think the level of service would degrade. But, you know, somebody's corporate knowledge and expertise may be different if we lose some potentially senior employees, yes. But in essence, we're gonna lose them anyways. It's just a matter of, of when. And, and this program is designed, uh, to go after the budgetary aspect of the, the situation we're currently in.
And again, it's an offering.
Correct, this is an offering, uh, there is no obligation for anyone that will be on this list to take it. There's absolutely no, no obligation. This is one hundred percent an employee option, uh, and they have to opt into it. Every individual's financial situation will be different. Their ages are all different, you know, when they plan to marry up their retirement and any potential social security or any other potential retirement plans they have in place. You know, every individual will have to walk through this with CalPERS specifically, which will happen if they, if they choose to opt in.
So I, again, I, I think we had a little bit of a exchange to get some clarification, but my understanding, we're, we're basically offering as a incentive to depart early, this a two-year addition of years earned. Which means they can, they might receive more in retirement and they might receive it sooner. Those are some of the calculations that we've been looking at. And that we believe, even though we can't get down to all the various permutations of who does and who doesn't and what's their impact and so forth, that when we look at what we believe the cost would be of offering that, that even if some of them get replaced with lower paying positions and some may not get replaced, we will still be net positive. And that, that's, that's the, that's how we're going into this.
That is a true statement.
Okay, so it, it's, um, and I, I'd just say I've been with several companies, my very first company was at the time the largest company in the world, AT&amp;T, small compared to the ones now. And they were offering these things all the time and I was there, I, I was only there eight and a half years, so I never qualified. They wanted it for the, like you're doing, for the people that were around twenty years, twenty-five years and, and for this, the same exact reason. And, um, so I'm familiar with it, it, I understand it's a helpful tool and there can be growing pains from, or, or I guess call it transition pains from losing that level of expertise and experience and bringing in people and all that. But we were making tough decisions, are making tough decisions about how to get this budget balanced and this seems like a reasonable approach, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking about instead of clarifying, clarifying a question, sorry.
That's, that's just fine.
Okay.
And just as, as a clarification, this is the, again, this is the, the first step the board will see. Then if, if this is approved today, then on the third of December, well, there'll be actually a resolution that we have to do and some other documents that we'll have to, to sign and send back to CalPERS to actually initiate the program. Then it would go into effect, uh, in essence, the next, the next day for that ninety day period.
Okay. Let's go to, no, no other questions? Uh, any, uh, public comment in the room? Any online?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay.
I
Oh.
Have a raised hand. Jamie?
Uh, just a clarifying question, if possible, uh, who exactly is going to qualify as far as age ranges go? I've just heard it's kind of been back and forth as to who's gonna qualify and who's not. So if you have a three at fifty scenario.
We lost you Jamie.
Chair, if I may, I think I understand the gist of the question. So I love this answer, it depends. But now, out of all sincerity, it, it does depend upon whether you're safety or miscellaneous. It depends upon when you entered the CalPERS system. It depends upon what MO year you are under with the county. So, uh, Jamie, if, if you're interested, there's a, you know, piece of paper on the backup for the board report that shows the specific classifications and then the specific retirement plans that those individuals are, are under. They range from, uh, three percent at fifty, uh, which is the, the youngest, if you will, and most to two percent at sixty-two. And then there's a couple of variations in between there, but that's basically the range. And then some people may ask too, you know, why the sheriff's office, why probation, why BHS? Why a couple of other positions, uh, and not, you know, another department? Well, the answer to that is, uh, this has got to be tied to our, um, budgetary realities, if you will. And if the board and public recalls, uh, as part of the budget adoption process, as last year, the sheriff's office and probation, uh, were the two heaviest hit departments.
I had heard the age rating within that though, that like you had to be a certain age within the three percent at fifty to qualify, is that also true?
Yeah, I, I wanna avoid that we're getting into a discussion instead of receiving public comment and acknowledging it. So Jamie, if you have additional comments that you would like to make? Okay. Any other?
I have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
Okay. And thank you, uh, CEO Todd Hill for providing some information to help, uh, Jamie as well as others understand kind of how this all works. So, um, no public comment, we'll bring it back for a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
Any discussion? Supervisor Frazier, you're thinking about it?
Oh, I, I was just Oh, I, I was just wondering what the, it, it's hard to know what the actual effect would be if we had that many people retire from the sheriff's department. It's, uh, it's a scary prospect to backfill that. Or if we don't backfill that, my question would be, what's, if, if all those people chose to retire and we didn't have someone waiting in the wings to take that spot, what does that do to operations in our county? That would be my, my biggest concern.
If all of those people take it, um, we would have less officers out providing safety to the county, but we would be able to meet our minimal obligations, uh, in the jail. Ongoing right now, we do have recruitment efforts, um, out there for both or for, um, correctional deputies. Uh, we do not have any active sheriff deputies advertisements. Um, but pending the board's decision on this process, uh, that will probably change.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It would be highly unlikely that everybody would take the golden handshake, I'd imagine.
I would concur with that. Yes.
Do we have any kind of idea percentage maybe?
Uh, it would be purely speculative on my part and there's no reason to do that.
Okay, please call the vote.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Littweiler?
Aye.
Thank you.
A report out from prior closed session, item F1, Government Code Section 54954.5F. Conference with labor negotiators, counties designated representatives, Leila Cassis, Suzie Hawkins, Margaret Long, Employee Organization General Unit, and direction was given to the negotiators. Uh, with that, we'll be moving towards closed session where we have one item. Government Code Section 54956.95 Liability Claim, Claimant Employee ID 02032, Claim Number TIBZ600077. Do we have any public comment about closed session?
I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay.
Chair, may I make one comment before you close this meeting? So in my, um, board report, I made some comments about the library hours. Since then, the, I just want to clarify for the library hours in Weaverville. If our current personnel actions, uh, remain on track, meaning we hired the new part-time assistant librarian by the 15th of November, uh, we will not go to reduced hours in Weaverville until the first week of December. Uh, so that'll be an approximate two and two to two and a half week adjustment there for Weaverville only. If our current plans remain in place, uh, for the additional, uh, staff member that we're planning on bringing on. Just as a clarification and all that information will be posted appropriately by the library.
Thank you. Well, as we adjourn, I just want to, uh, thank staff and supervisors for working through that as, as we discussed. It was uncomfortable. It's not fun. And sometimes we struggle with the answers, but I appreciate the effort to try to get to the right answer. And we are adjourned for closed session.